Good evening, councilors. I'd like to welcome you all to our May 9, 2023 City Council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council, and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on the phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to begin by announcing the names of the City Councilors and City staff who are present. My name is Val Gilman. I'm the Ward Four City Councilor and I'm the Council President. Next is Jason Groh, who is an at-large counselor. We have Scott Memmard, who is Ward One City Councilor. Tony Gross is our at-large counselor. Sean Nolan is Ward Five City Counselor, and he is also the Vice President of the City Council. Council Jamie O'Hara is an at-large counselor. Council Frank Marjota is the Ward Three City Counselor. And Jeff Worthley is not going to be here tonight. And he has an important engagement with his kids at O'Malley. So, and Council O'Neil will be late. But she did just call me to tell me she will be here. And so I'd like to also introduce our staff that's here. First of all, Greg Berger, our mayor is here. Welcome, Mayor. Jill Cahill, who is our C A O, is here. Welcome, Jill. And then we have Joe Lucido, who is our Assistant Director of Public Works. Welcome, Joe. I know you've been working hard this past week, so thank you. Kenny Coster is here. He's our auditor. And let's see, Ryan Knowles is our I T Director. Welcome, Ryan. And I think that is it. Let me just check on our list to see if there are any more panelists that are here that's members staff, and I would say that is not the case. And we have thirty-four attendees, and I already see seven hands raised. So we will have some people that will be speaking in public comments. So next order of business, Madam Clerk. Joanne, wait a second. Time out. I didn't introduce you. How terrible is that? Joanne Sinos, who is our City Clerk. Sorry about that. Forgive me.
I'm fine.
So first order of business, Madam Clerk.
First order of business is oral communications.
Thank you. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. And Joanne, if you would, actually, tonight, the first person on roll call is Council O'Hara. Jamie, are you in a position to do the timing?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could just say time at ten of ten minutes, ten seconds before the three minutes, that would be great, and then that will be my trigger to that ten seconds will be the wrap-up. So I appreciate that. So at this point, is there anyone that would like to speak in oral communications? We now have ten attendees with their hands raised. So Madam Clerk, would you bring in the first person? And for those of you who are new to speaking in public comments, if you would introduce yourself and state your address, you have three minutes to talk to us about anything that's not on the agenda tonight. So thank you. Francisco Vitale. Francisco, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Francesco Paul Vitale. I'm a lifelong resident. I currently live at Four Haskell Court, where me and my wife have been living there since January of 2002. It's her family home that's been in, and her family since, I believe, was nineteen oh five. And I'm calling about our water issue where our pipes are rotten out. And, you know, we were told, well, it's a private road. Well, you know, like I said before, you know, the road was public and then magically became private. The pipes were laid down in sometime in the forties by the City of Gloucester. We have been paying for water service, all the residents of the street, since water has been delivered to our homes all these years, and our pipes have never been replaced, maintained, or anything. Recently, a few years ago, they went up Haskell Street. They did a courtesy encampment. I don't remember how many feet, six, eight, or something like that, with the higher pressure pipe going into a smaller pipe and probably caused more damage by doing that little courtesy than any good. And since, like everybody else on Haskell Street, that got the water lines all replaced in the street, with my tax money that I paid, I would like mine done as well. I don't want to do a betterment or anything like that. We pay for our water. We pay for our sewer. And we want this repaired as quickly as possible because there are times when we get in the shower and you have water and a neighbor or somebody else turns something on and you have a drip. And you cannot, you know, and it always happens right after you lather up or got shampoo in your hair and it's going down in your eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Francesco. Appreciate you being on the call. Next person with the hand raised. Charles Neuss, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have three minutes to speak to our council. Welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, my name is Charles Neuss. I'm here with Kimberly Typer. We own and reside year-round here at sixty-one Crafts Road, and we have since 2014. I want to make comment. This past Saturday, Kim and I joined nearly fifty of our neighbors in a neighborhood meeting to discuss making a formal request to the City Council and the mayor to move forward with replacing what we have here for water, which is a seasonal above-ground, I'll call it, city-provided seasonal water system, and replace that with a year-round deep-water city water system. Fire safety is a primary reason for our request. You know, with the many wildfires that we've experienced certainly locally last summer and again already this spring in Gloucester, having year-round water supply with sufficient water pressure that would allow the Gloucester Fire Department to save lives and our homes in the event of a fire here in Rust Island, in our mind, has been elevated from a nice-to-have city service to a need-to-have city service. We've got three businesses and fifty homes here on Rust Island, and many are now year-round residents as we are. And the risk of a catastrophic fire event is high, and it's very real. And it's also very concerning to the majority of the inhabitants here on Rust Island, specifically for Kim and I at sixty-one Crafts Road. According to Fire Chief Eric Smith in a recent email to Councilor Nolan, D P W Head Mike Hale, and Mayor Berger, he made comment that it's operationally is difficult for the fire department in various areas of the city where hydrants are distant. The distance to stretch a line to the end of Crafts Road, which we are four homes away from, depending on the route you take, is a long stretch and requires at least three and probably four engines to accomplish that long of a relay pumping operation. I won't read the entire email, but one quote in here is, "Obviously, this eats up a lot of resources and takes additional time to get those resources in place." So we can all imagine what it would take to get three to four trucks hooked up to a fire hydrant at Lobster Land and run it all the way up here to the end of Crafts Road. The second reason we're requesting year-round water supply is to provide safe, potable drinking water to those that want to connect to city-supplied water service. Here at Craft sixty-one Crafts Road, we have three dried-up and previously abandoned wells on our property now. Given we all likely share the same water aquifer here for our wells, there's no doubt that we'll continue to experience well failures and saltwater infiltration to our domestic water systems. So given that we are likely, and I believe this is the truth, the largest neighborhood in Gloucester by the number of homes and businesses not to have year-round city water service or fire protection, we request that as year-round taxpayers, the citizens of Rust Island, be provided year-round city water service. So Kim and I would like to thank you.
Ten seconds.
Thank you, Jamie. Want to thank you for our time and consideration of our request tonight, and thank Val, Jamie, and Jeff, and of course, Ward Five Counselor Sean Nolan for attending and being with us. Give us advice to the neighborhood. We appreciate your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you for being here. Next person with a hand raised. Scott Kealan, would you introduce yourself, Scott? And tell us your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
Great. Yes, thank you for hearing me. My name's Scott Kellen. I live at sixty-two Crafts Road. This is following a lot of Charlie's comments. I've lived there going on eighteen years now with my wife and my two teenage boys. Lifelong resident of Massachusetts as well. And I'd like to start with thanking the council members and all that have tuned into the Zoom meeting. I have to say, I actually have two main concerns. I have to say, one main concern is the fire hazards, the lack of deep water and the hydrants posed to the residents of the island. The one hydrant by Lobster Land is not nearly adequate to ensure the safety of Rust Island residents in their homes. The need for deep water is unquestionable. We live at the father's possible location on Crafts Road, actually further down, actually the last house on Rust Island. And we have access to and it's hard to imagine, God forbid, that we had a fire that needed to be extinguished. It's just not physically possible to get to my home with water in a timely fashion to save lives or to put out a fire. The other part I'd like to point out is the salinity content of the well water that must be used in the off-season for all the residents on Rust Island is astronomically high. It poses a danger for health reasons. Increased water salinity usually leads to several adverse health effects. There are really just too many to mention. Whether the water being used for drinking, cooking, or bathing, all the Rust Island residents should have access to clean water year-round for their daily needs. As residents and taxpayers of Gloucester and Massachusetts, we should all be granted the same rights as others. In this, in this case, year-round water for the safety of our families and for our homes. City Councilor members, it's up to you to get this done. We can only voice our opinions and concerns and hope that you can all take this to the next level and create the change that is needed for the safety of our residents and our peace of mind. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Scott. I'd like to acknowledge that Council O'Neil is on the call. Thank you, Counselor. Anne Strong, nice to see you again. Would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us?
Thank you, President Gilman. My name is Anne Strong, and I live at forty-four Crafts Road on Rust Island. As Charlie and Scott are my neighbors here on the island, but we all join with our greater neighbors on Becker Circle and the Becker Circle neighborhood and on Haskell Court in the need for water. The meeting that Charlie Neuss mentioned on Saturday, May 5, was attended by close to fifty residents who represented twenty-five houses and one business here on Rust Island. And we are deeply appreciative that our Ward Counselor Sean Nolan was there, the President Val Gilman attended, and at-large counselors Jamie O'Hara and Jeff Worthley were also there. Jamie, of course, was, you know, attending by phone, as you're all used to, I assume, right? So it was a really good turnout. We were very happy. You may be wondering what we on West Island want. Well, what do we want? We want a year-round water supply that will allow the Gloucester Fire Department to save our lives and our homes in the event of fire. We want a year-round water supply that will allow us to have salt-free water we can drink and won't ruin our plumbing and our appliances. And when do we want it? We want it now.
Thank you, Anne.
Well, I'm not quite done, Val. Sorry.
Okay, go ahead. We lost you for a second.
That's okay. Sort of cut out bad connection here, but that's not your problem. My question is this, and I would like a response within the next two weeks, if possible. Will the city provide year-round water to Rust Island, and when? And that's all I have to say tonight. I thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council and the mayor. It's a great job you're all doing. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Anne. Next hand raised. Kevin O'Malley, welcome. You have up to three minutes to talk to the City Council.
Hello, thank you, President Gilman, as well as all council members and Mayor Berger. My goal as a resident of forty-seven Crafts Road, Rust Island, is all to address fire protection on Rust. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity after our meeting to learn a little bit about the nature of fires and receive that information from my neighbor, who is also a retired Gloucester firefighter. And his main concern is that when a fire gets going, if the oxygen is present, that the fire itself can double in size in a matter of minutes and then just keep doubling from there on. What stops? The difference between a fire going big or a fire not going big is dictated first and foremost by water supply. You have to have water to put the fire out. And then the second thing is obviously the response time by our local firefighters, guys and gals, to get there and fight that fire. We saw this as an example of when a potential catastrophe, a fire going big, could have gone off at midnight at City Hall this past Wednesday evening. That fire was contained in two hours completely. They went back to the station. They were on the scene within minutes to take on the fire. And what we all know is a building that could be a tinderbox with its age, as well as the documents that are in there. So fortunately, the guys and gals of the Gloucester Fire Department got there and did their thing. The opposite of that is I'm now, every time I drive over that one-twenty-eight bridge, I look out at Rust Island and imagine somebody on a summer afternoon when the temperature is about eighty, ninety degrees, and we have a hard late afternoon southwest wind coming down Little River. Somebody throws a butt out, and that thing takes off and gets going. The reality is, the summer water lines are not efficient enough to force water. The present water line, the Lobster Land, is an eight-inch line. The city water lines are two-inch lines, so it's not going to work. The second thing is in the shifting off of that is the winter lines and running pipes off of Ford trucks with icy roads. The same problem exists. The bottom line is, we deserve to be treated equally. We need fire protection, and that only comes through water, and that will allow our guys and gals on the fire department to do their thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin. Next hand raised. Would you come in and introduce yourself to our council? And you have three minutes to speak to us. Jerry, welcome.
Welcome. Hello. Hi, my name is Jerry Pagliisi, and my husband Tony and I own the home at Eight Haskell Court. We've been here thirty-one years and are both lifelong residents of Gloucester. This is my second oral communication pertaining to Haskell Court's deteriorating private water and sewer lines. Over the years, there's been emails and meetings with Mayor Thaken, Mayor Berger, and Mike Hale regarding this issue. When I met with Mayor Thaken, the discussion led to the residents agreeing to a paved abatement and the city would replace the water lines. The Haskell Court residents met and agreed and signed the petition for paving, which was submitted to the city on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. On December ninth, we received an email from D P W Director Mike Hale with a paving estimate of seventy-five thousand dollars. But in that same email, he included infrastructure estimates between a hundred and twenty thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus that the eight homeowners of Eight Haskell Court would be responsible to pay over a twenty-year abatement. This is just unacceptable and honestly extremely insulting. We pay the same tax, water and sewer rates, as other residents on public roads. We deserve and are entitled to the same services. Our water and sewer lines have deteriorated, and that, along with no fire hydrant, are making us very concerned for our health and safety. Over the last month or so, we've been informed that the city has installed new water lines, fire hydrants, and has paved private roads, including Woodman Street, Overlook Ave, Inglewood Road, and others. All this work done at no cost to those residents on those private roads. Please, explain to me how these private road residents were not required to pay abatement, but the residents of Haskell Court are. Why are we not being treated equally? Since the city is not able to provide us with a service that we're paying for, why haven't we been receiving an abatement? Many, many questions with no valid answers. Mayor Berger, you are the decision-maker. Please, it's time for you to step up and approve this project. This has been going on for far too many years. We also support the residents of Becker Circle, Becker Lane, White Mountain Road, and Rust Island. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry. Next person with a hand raised. Steve Blank, would you introduce yourself and your street? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Welcome.
Hello, councilors. Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Steve Blank, Nine Carlisle Street. I just want to share a little bit of institutional knowledge that I learned a while ago from Bruce Tovey, Jackie Hardy, and Bob Wynott. We have a gas leak up on Gloucester Ave. It's pretty bad. It was hissing last week. We got some video of it. Our Counselor Frank Marjota was there a couple of weeks ago. It was so strong, it made a couple of people in our neighborhood meeting almost got sick from the overpowering smell of gas. So what I learned from those former councilors is that National Grid comes to planning and development and asks for permits. You can deny a permit. You can tell them that they need to fix gas leaks. You can tell them that they need to take down double poles. You can deny permits for National. National Grid has to do city work in our city, and we allow them to do it. The City Council allows them to do it. So it's just a little empowerment of planning and development and the City Council to deny National Grid road opening or a pole permit petition or something to that matter that gets our gas leaks fixed. We've reached out to them. They said it wasn't an issue. Frank was there. Frank can tell you it was an issue. We set up right on top of it. It's very, very powerful. They told us not to smoke near it. Don't put any light. We're going to have a major catastrophe up here at the Gloucester Avenue, upper end Gloucester Avenue. So I'm asking planning and development to step up, go against the green, against National Grid. They need to do business in the city. They need your permission. So you hold all the keys. Let's get these gas lines fixed, not just on Gloucester Avenue, but throughout the city. There's probably almost a hundred gas leaks throughout the city that need to get fixed. So I'm asking the City Council, and especially planning and development, to deny permits or at least say, you know what, you guys aren't getting any more permits until we resolve some of these issues, especially the bad ones. So that's just a little bit of institutional knowledge that I learned from some former mayors, make city councilors and council presidents that I'm just sharing with you guys. So I really appreciate you guys listening to me, and I hope this is resolved before we have a major explosion and hopefully not a death up here on the top of this hill. So I'm looking forward to some action from the council and planning and development.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, guys.
Next is Karen Carrero. Karen, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to our council for matters not on the agenda. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Karen Carrero. I'm a Gloucester native and live at thirty-three Railroad Avenue, directly opposite the downtown Gloucester Railroad Station. I'm here today to get the city support to convince the M B T A commuter rail to remove a large commuter sign structure and bench under the canopied area of the station. This particular area has been taken over by vagrants and addicts. Let me be clear, I am sympathetic to the plight of homelessness and addiction, but I'm here to protect my rights and the rights of my neighbors to peace and enjoyment of our homes and businesses without excessive disturbance from others. These disturbances can be detrimental to one's health. The individuals who hang out at this particular area are loud, foul-mouthed, argumentative, inconsiderate, and a danger to themselves, residents, and commuters. At times, they leave behind eyesores of tarts, pillows, blankets, and clothes that someone else has to clean up. I've contacted the police numerous times during the two and a half years that I have lived here. The police have always been respectful and sympathetic, but no matter how many times the police respond, this will go on as long as this hangout exists. One individual I call the ringleader sleeps on the bench most nights and attracts others to stop by and linger. I have been awoken many times at night by their loud talk, arguments, and even singing. I've witnessed them provoking passersby and fights amongst themselves using rocks and fists. I contacted the M B T A commuter rail operations department, who have communicated about this issue. At my request, the operations manager had no loitering signs put up around this area, but the signs haven't stopped these individuals from hanging out. Removal of the sign structure and bench would not interfere with the operation of the commuter rail service whatsoever. The train does not board or disembark passengers in this area. Rather, the elevated platform is where the train stops and where commuters wait. I have only seen a couple commuters wait under the canopied area, and that is only when it rains. I believe that if the M B T A could be convinced to remove this particular sign structure and bench, that it would discourage vagrants and addicts from hanging out because the large sign gives them a sense of privacy and safety, and the bench gives them a place to rest and sleep.
Karen, you have ten seconds to wrap up, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
The area without the sign and bench would be open and give a clearer view of these individuals and their behavior that I'm certain they won't want exposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next hand raised. If you would introduce yourself and your address, and you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you. Welcome, Jane.
Good evening. This is Jane Fox Dobson and her husband William Dobson.
Welcome.
Thank you. On May third, the heart of this city was on fire. I applaud the City of Gloucester Fire Department for their quick response and for distinguishing the fire in fifteen minutes flat. The city is fortunate that the building was vacant at this time and that the fire did not spread and destroy our historical treasure or other nearby buildings. This fire should serve as a warning. These hot flames should awaken our city officials to the fact that neighborhoods such as Becker Lane, Becker Circle, and White Mountain Road, Haskell Court, and Rust Island are in desperate need of fire hydrants. For example, the distance from the furthest residential home on White Mountain Road to the closest fire hydrant is one-half mile, which is two thousand six hundred and forty feet. Yet, in Chapter eighteen, Section two of the Massachusetts Building Codes, it states that for detached one and two-family dwellings, fire hydrants shall be provided in accordance with both of the following. One, the maximum distance to a fire hydrant from the closest point to the building shall not exceed six hundred feet. One, the maximum distance to a fire hydrant from the closest point to the building shall not exceed six hundred feet. And two, the maximum distance between fire hydrants shall not exceed eight hundred feet. Please note that there not, are not enough fire trucks at West Gloucester Station. Other emergency responders and vehicles will need to travel quite a distance just to reach the scene. This puts residents at risk, both those affected by the fire as well as those that are now without emergency responders close by. Back in two thousand six, Bridget Clary, age forty-two, paid the ultimate sacrifice due to a Lanesville fire. It took at least fifteen minutes for firefighters to arrive from Central Station instead of the estimated three minutes from the Bayview Station, which was closed at the time. Usually, a fire truck is equipped with five hundred feet of hose, which is made up of ten to fifty feet sections. Therefore, in the example above, at least six fire trucks are needed to respond to a fire alarm. Also, a team of firefighters is essential to connect a sufficient length of hose from the closest fire hydrant to the furthest residential home on White Mountain Road. Time is of the essence when it comes to saving lives in residential homes, and time is diminished due to treacherous road conditions, especially during inclement weather. Our taxes financially fund our fire departments and personnel, and rightfully so. Over the past thirty-four years, my neighborhood has paid approximately six million dollars in property taxes for city services. Although we support a citywide emergency response system, our city does not provide an adequate number of fire hydrants for its residents in their homes. How many of us need to pay the ultimate sacrifice like Bridget Clary before the city addresses this safety issue? I ask you to please put this matter at the top of your priority list. In closing, I would also like to thank Ward Counselor Sean Nolan. His tireless effort to advocate for Ward Five has resulted in the installation of more than twenty new fire hydrants in our community. Thank you, Sean Nolan, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Jane. Next hand raised. If you'd introduce yourself and state your address, and you have three minutes to speak to our council. Um, Chris Peterson, introduce yourself. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Chris Peterson. Uh, I live at thirty-Yield County Road here on Rust Island. I've been here since two thousand seventeen with my partner Sarah and daughter Leah. Uh, I'd like to add our names to, uh, what Charlie, Kim, Scott, Kevin, Anne, and others have already articulated. Uh, I'd, I'd add that although some have limited summer water here on Rust Island, many of us have no city water at all. Uh, in addition to the fire danger, the continued incursion of salt into our wells is fast becoming a desperate situation. Uh, finally, thank you to the council members who attended last Saturday. Uh, we deeply appreciate the attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We have four more hands for, raised. Um, next person, um, Judy, if you'd introduce yourself and state your address, and you have three minutes to talk to us. Welcome. Can you unmute yourself? Judy, can you unmute yourself? We can't hear you. Now we can. You have the floor. Name and address. Thank you.
Uh, this is Tom Robinson Cox. And Judy Robinson Cox, we're both here. Basically, I just wanted-
Can you state your address for us?
Yeah, five Haskell Court in Gloucester.
Thank you.
Um, we've been going through this process of trying to get some repairs done in our street for paving and for infrastructure for almost a year now. And in a meeting that I had a year ago, on May thirteenth, with Mayor Verga, he expressed great concern for our problems with having inadequate water supply. He was sympathetic to our cause because he had a similar situation in his two-family house over in West Gloucester with tuberculated pipes. He was very encouraging. And he said that if, uh, that's similar to over on, uh, a briar neck, that if the residents agreed to do pay for the paving, the city would, uh, replace the water pipes for us. And it took eight months after we had signed our petition to get a, the, the quote that was, uh, due us from Mike Hale, DPW. And in it, as Jerry said, it was a, an estimate for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for uh, infrastructure repair for the water pipes alone, for an eight-inch main and a fire hydrant, which we don't have on the court. And also seventy-five thousand dollars for paving. I've been a resident here for thirty-seven years, and I paid my taxes dutifully, full share of water and sewer, including whatever portion accrues because of the C S O project. And I really don't see any reason when we bought a place with municipal water, why we should have to have the financial burden of paying for, to pay to replace the pipes ourselves. While I did agree that it was, you know, good that the city had put a mechanism in place with the new infrastructure, with the new water pipe betterment process. Reading the fine print on it, I see that because I own or occupy a three-family, I'm gonna, my share of this cost is gonna be thirty percent of Mike Hale's estimate of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, thirty-six thousand dollars. And, and my share is also uh, twenty-two percent of the paving of seventy-five thousand dollars. The total, the total cost to me is gonna be fifty-three thousand dollars, and that's just an estimate. It's subject to, oh, cost overrides if they encounter a ledge. And since they're going with, requires an eight-inch pipe in place of a two-inch pipe, I have no doubt ledge will be encountered. At this kind of rate, looking at a minimum of fifty-three thousand dollars, which could easily double. It's, you know, I just can't afford it.
Tom, if you could wrap up in the next ten seconds, um, your time is up.
Whatever, whatever relief the city can afford us, I would really greatly appreciate because, you know, this is just financially burdensome. And I don't, and I for one just can't afford it. Thanks, bud.
Thank you, Tom. Um, next hand raised. Um, introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to talk to us. Meg Jarrett, welcome.
Hi, um, thank you so much, mayor and city councilors. Um, I also live at, I live at twenty Biskie Head Point, which is part of the Rust Island community as well. Uh, we are, uh, on the other side, on the Nichols, um, chocolate side. And there are two business there's plus offices and five homes, and we too have zero water, no summer water, no seasonal water. We are pipes rusted out, our appliances rusted out, our hair looks terrible. Um, but we love where we live and, um, but safety is, is first and foremost. We only acquired a, the closest water hydrant for us is fire hydrant is in front of, uh, Lobsterland now. And that was just only with their recent renovations in the past two years. Prior to that, the closest fire hydrant for all of Rust Island and all of Biskie Head Point, including a marina and sorry, and several businesses was in front of Sudbay's Motor. So that is completely unacceptable. We, yes, our homes would burn down. Um, our lives could be at stake if it was during hours that we weren't awake. So I too am begging you to address our water, uh, situation, our safety, and our peace of mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Meg. Next hand raised. If you'd introduce yourself, you have three minutes to talk to us. Name and address. Thank you. Kathy, would you unmute yourself?
Yes, hi, this is Captain Hurdle. I'm, uh, live at eighteen Biskie Head Point. I'm Meg Jarrett's neighbor. And on Biskie Head Point, um, as she said, I'd like to, uh, verify that, that we have completely salty water, unpotable water for the majority of the year. We have no means of, uh, fixing that. I have a reverse osmosis system, but it results in a large waste of water. I have also, in the thirteen years that I've lived at my home, replaced my dishwasher, my washing machine, my well pump twice, my, uh, boiler, and my water heater. And that is all within the first thirteen years of living here. These are appliances that should last much longer than that. Also, my, uh, all of our gardens, all of my plants are ruined every summer because of the salt water. I cannot water them with a hose or the watering system. And, uh, this is not an inconsequential, uh, loss to us. We would like to at least have summer water. Uh, we understand that that's no longer an option, but the marina has summer water, which is adjacent to all of our homes on the southern end of Rust Island. So obviously, we would like to have year-round city water. But in the absence of that, at the very least, we would like to be afforded summer water uh, in the interim. So we also don't have a fire hydrant, and all of the homes on Biskie Head Point are wooden. And if we did have a fire, we would have to just sit by and watch it burn. Last year, Meg Jarrett had a fire in her brush at her home. And I pulled, it was, it happened in early, in late spring, and I pulled all of my hose reels out of the basement, ran over, hooked them up, and we all used our hoses to try to control that fire. When the fire department finally came, they had one truck, they sprayed the water and had to leave to go get more water from Essex. So clearly, the fire mitigation situation is also a real problem. Uh, we would really appreciate your consideration, and we thank you for your time to consider delivering potable, uh, and safety water to Biskie Head Point. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next person with their hand raised. You have, um, you introduce yourself, Greg, and, um, your address. You have three minutes to talk to us.
Hi, Gregory Doe, thirteen Thompson Street, also noted as seven Whites Mountain Road. My words on it's gonna be as pleasant as other people's. In dealing with mayors, DPW directors, and water department employees, we've been told for over thirty years that the city is not gonna help us with our delivery problems. Some are not so pleasant words. Twenty years ago, I went before council committees, and only one counselor, Joe Chalino, voted to help us. The DPW director says, no money. We pay the same tax and water rates as other city properties, but do not receive the same services. We contribute to improve the infra- infrastructure of downtown Gloucester. We contributed to install sewer and water down Washington Street to Lanesville. We contributed for upgrades to East Gloucester. We contributed for sewer upgrades for the Buport Hotel and the Fort Neighborhood. We contributed for sewer upgrades to the city's newest development, Gloucester Crossings, and the YMCA and the Hayward Apartments. We've contributed to install sewer and water lines to Little River Neighborhoods and on into Essex. But the city keeps telling us, private road, sorry, pound sand, we're not gonna help you. But they keep asking for more money to fix the rest of the city. Correct me on those facts I gave you were from wrong. So why is it the city spent two years installing the water line on Overlook Road? A private road with nothing but summer water existed. Most residents are on wells, and few are hooking up. So why is it the city installed a water line down Lake Road, a private road, where the water line never existed? A few homes are looked, hooking up. I got another one. Woodman Street, a private road where few homes have hooked up to. Oh, one more, sorry, Seville Road. Now, that's a private road with water problems, and that's an interesting story. Look that one up. Have I missed any in the city? Probably. And we also had to pay to pave those, repave those streets. Did I mention a lack of water protection in the Whites Mountain Becker Lane Circle neighborhood? Did I mention that the closest fire hydrants are over three hundred feet from most houses? And Jane told you five hundred feet in the Whites Mountain Becker Lane Circle area. Did I mention a hundred acres of land that burnt ten years ago behind my house? Did I mention the chimney fire in Dave White's house? How about the other brush fire? The brush fire that al- almost burnt down Kelly Seagrass Barn and livestock. So what happens next, or next fire? Who's gonna lose their home? Who's gonna lose their life? Because the city powers that be, the people running this city and run it in the past, have not believed that these neighborhoods deserve the same services as the rest of the city.
Um, Greg, you have two, um, ten seconds to wrap up. Thank you.
I'm done. Thank you for all your work. I know it's not easy.
Um, next person with their hand raised. Would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to speak to the council?
I don't see any more hands raised. Oh, the one just came up.
Okay. Um, Beverly, um, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to talk to our council?
Beverly Palachi, eight Commonwealth Avenue. I have a very quick question. It has nothing to do with water. Uh, it has to do with the MBTA. I've been sort of asking this question of the ether, and I'm not getting an answer. So I thought I could maybe get the answer from the city. Do we know what the Gloucester ridership is of the commuter rail? Can I get that answer from the city?
Um, so Beverly, the, the mayor will respond to you, um, in, in that information, so, um, that will be within the next two weeks. So-
Great.
But thank you for asking a question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next person, um, with a hand raised. Would you introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to talk to the council? John Fallon, welcome.
Yes, good evening, yeah, everyone. I just wanted to, uh-
Could you, um, state your address too, John?
Yes, uh, fifty-four Yield County Road. Um, my wife and myself have lived there since two thousand and fourteen. And, um, just wanted to, you know, get on board with everybody to voice our concerns about the fire safety issues and, uh, the water quality. Um, it would be, uh, advantageous to take action proactively before a tragedy happens, uh, than to react to something that could be very tragic. So just wanted to get that out there. I want to thank everybody for all their hard work. And, um, hopefully we can get this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next hand raised, um. Would you introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to talk to the council, and make sure you state your address as well. Thank you. Can you unmute yourself? Phone, uh, sending in three-three. If you would hit star nine, if you're dialing in from your phone, you will, um, unmute yourself. Star nine. Two-nine-three-three. We see your hand raised. If you're dialing from a phone, which appears that you are, just hit star nine. Your hand is raised. But you're muted. If you're, if you can hear me, if you are calling in on a phone, if you could hit star nine, that will unmute your phone.
I'd say time.
Excuse me?
I'd say time. We've given enough time on that.
Okay. Um, for, for, for the person that's been trying to call, um, would you, um, contact your ward counselor tomorrow, and we'll make sure that you can share your concern, and, um, we will get back to you, um, in the next two weeks, the mayor will. So thank you. Sorry that you're not able to zoom in. Um, and, um, final person with your hand raised. Um, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to talk to the council?
There are no more hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So, um, thank you, um. We all sat.
Yes.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is a presentation. It's an update from the city administration, and we got to the recent fire at City Hall.
Great, and thank you. Mayor Verga, we'll let you, um, lead the conversation and update us- Great, and thank you. Mayor Verga will let you lead the conversation and update us. Welcome. And welcome the rest of the team.
Thank you. So I'll be giving the overview. Joe Lucido is on hand to talk about some more details about, um, because he was there the night of the fire. And so he'll give you some details of that as well as where we are now, where we're going. Uh, Jill will come in to talk about closures, uh, of City Hall. Where the, the rotating staff we're going to have and the shifting we've done of staff to other buildings. And we also will have a slideshow that Jill will share some to give you a better handle on what's going on. So just to recap, on May third, Wednesday evening at around eleven thirty, there was a fire at City Hall. Uh, it started in the, um, the Archives office behind the, um, purchasing office in the basement. Uh, there was minimal fire damage. There were no injuries reported. Though there was no fire damage, there was some smoke damage. So you recall, we were closed last Thursday and Friday. As a precaution, we closed today, which is Tuesday, and yesterday, which is Monday. We're announcing when it will be closed to the public through this Friday. The main reason for that is because of where the fire happened and where most of the work's going to be going on. We have to close off the handicapped entrance down in the basement. And without ADA compliance, uh, we can't operate. So the, we're hoping that by this weekend, we'll have ready for Monday, a temporary handicap ramp, which, uh, Joe will go into some more detail about. Um, so right now, the efforts are underway to mitigate the smoke damage, which went through the whole building. The Cairo's auditorium, will be out of commission for most of the summer, unfortunately, because we need to set up. Or the service masters and their, their contractor need to set up staging. They have to clean every surface. That includes that thirty-foot high ceiling. And what else is going on? Interesting thing, so the artworks, they're not going to be handled by, you know, I've used the, the descriptions, not going to be guys with. Wind decks and paper towels. They're going to be handled by professionals who know what they're doing. Some of it, the large murals be held in place, others will be removed from the building. Uh, we urge people, again, to repeat, City Hall will remain closed for the remainder of the week. You can call, uh, Jill will have the number for the, the temporary, um, mayor's office. And use the online services as much as possible through the city's website. I think with that, that's sort of the overview, but I think you guys really want to get down to the details. So I'm going to hand it over to Joe Lucido, and if you can give Jill, uh, the opportunities to share her screen. We can put this photos up that'll help better, um, describe what Joe's talking about. So with that, three, here to Joe Lucido.
I think I can right now, so I just, let me try that real quick. I can't see you once I do it, so hold on. All right.
Thank you. Um, Joe Lucido, you have the floor. Welcome and thank you for all your hard work.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. So at approximately eleven thirty on Wednesday evening. Uh, we were alerted to a burglar alarm and fire alarm coming from that nine Dale Avenue. Um, the process goes typically, the, our monitoring company will notify police and fire. Um, and then the second call is to our on-call facility staff, followed by a call to me. So we did receive that call. We dispatched facilities personnel, as I said, police and fire would dispatch as well. Um, fortunately, you know, the fire station is right around the corner. They arrived within minutes with smoke showing condition. At that point, um, you know, they obviously deploy, deployed their, um. Equipment, quickly extinguished the fire, um, by the, I got on scene probably within about twelve minutes. And the fire had already been extinguished at that point in time. Um, it was contained to the Archives office, which is on the basement of City Hall. As a result of the fire, of course, um, a good part of the building had filled up with smoke. Once we got staff on hand, uh, we started opening windows, we moved in some equipment. Uh, we use some fire department fans as well as some fans we have in other city buildings. So we deployed a bunch of assets to try to move, um, the smoke out of the building. Um, at that point, fire department went through their normal process. They contacted the State Fire Marshal's Office. They sent an investigator down. The, um. Fire Department contacts there, in-house, uh, fire inspector. And the police department assigns a detective, um, to the case as well. So. As you can see in some of these pictures, we were very fortunate. The fire alarm system at City Hall, though antiquated, functions, functioned as it should. Uh, the newer systems now would have pinpointed exactly where the fire was. Our system is set up, there are three zones, zone one being the basement, zone two being the main floor, and zone three being the, uh, second floor and auditorium. So, uh, upon arrival, they were able to, you know, identify the location of the smoke and, and they, they knocked it down real quick. Um, and essentially, they saved, I would say, they saved the building. So as the night progressed or early morning progressed, we reached out to the administration. Uh, knowing that, you know, there would be definitely some fallout. Um, and we felt, you know, very strongly that we weren't going to open in the morning. Um, so all the, uh, you know, the key personnel were notified. Uh, that morning, about three o'clock, we left a message with our, uh, insurance carrier, who's Massachusetts, interlocal insurance agency. Uh, alerted them of the fire at about seven fifteen on Thursday morning. I received the call back from our area, um, representative. They had already assigned, uh, the case to one of their, um, contract cleaners, which would have been Service Master Godet out of Woburn. Um, within about fifteen minutes, I received a call from that project manager. He had three crews en route. Uh, they arrived at City Hall at approximately eight thirty. Um, they set up some air scrubbers, which you see in this picture here. Aluminum boxes that have multi-layers of filters. They have a fragrance attachment added to them. So these scrubbers will actually take and filter the air. Um, the filters are changed a couple times through the course of a day. Um, we will be living with these air scrubbers for probably. Close to the next, I'd say, four to six weeks. Um, there are probably about two dozen of them now located throughout City Hall. Um, and, and as I said, they will run, uh, pretty regularly. If you look at this bottom left-hand picture. Uh, the blue unit is a smaller version of that. Those are located in the offices that are and will be occupied. Uh, they do the same thing, just on a smaller scale, um, and obviously, they're a lot quieter than the bigger units. Um, so as of about eight thirty on Thursday morning, Service Master already had about fourteen people in the building. Wiping down surfaces, cleaning offices. Our main focus was, obviously, we got in, we isolated the archive, uh, the Archives office. Uh, that picture on the right, you'll see their door is closed behind it, but we have that, uh, poly wall system up with zippers on either side. That contains probably eighty percent of the odor from that fire room. Our, our initial goal was to obviously seal that off and get the rest of the building cleaned as, as quick as we could. We were fortunate that it was just a smoke condition, not a soot condition throughout the building. So if you were to walk through the building today, you'd say, geez, doesn't look so bad. Uh, but there's, there's a slight film on, uh, all your hard surfaces. Um, so we've methodically gone through, uh, the company's methodically gone through every office. Uh, we're cleaning from floor to ceiling. All the furniture, all the contents, uh, this middle picture, there's a bunch of law books. Each one of those books was actually taken off the shelf, vacuumed. The shelves are all vacuumed and that's step one of the process. All these belongings will have to be removed from the building, brought off-site. Cleaned and then brought back in. Um, they, we're talking about setting up a mobile cleaning station so they wouldn't go really far beyond the borders. But there are some items, uh, mainly the items that are inside the archive space where the fire room was, those will be brought off-site. They will be, uh, cryogenically treated, I believe. Photocopy and basically, um, duplicated and brought back to City Hall. So as I said, you know, air scrubbers were installed immediately. Then we get, I met with the project manager on site and, and like I said, our focus at that point was getting the, the essential offices. Cleaned and ready to be reoccupied as quickly as possible. Uh, so they had clear direction on that. They worked, um, all day Thursday, all day Friday. Saturday, Sunday, they were in there today, um, Monday as well. Um, we've had a chance to kind of catch our breath and look at the big picture. So, um, as the mayor had mentioned earlier, Cairo's auditorium will have to be staged. Um, we had a company in subcontractor in yesterday that will be staged from floor to ceiling. Uh, we are looking at, you know, cleaning every surface in there. Um, we're, we're trying to dovetail, as most of the counselors know, we have a, uh, City Hall. Building committee has just been reformed to talk about, um, you know, doing some substantial upgrades to the building, including fire protection. And or, um, electrical upgrades as well as data. Uh, there are some things in process right now. Uh, the IT department is working on. Helping the council out with, um. The hybrid meetings and we're, we're going to try to dovetail that current work that's going on in there with those contracts. So we may have an opportunity to, to share some resources. One of the biggest things that I keep hearing from the vendors coming in, they, you know, they look at our City Hall, it's not a City Hall. They're looking at it almost as a restoration of a museum. Um, you know, very old building, the amount of artwork in there, the amount of, uh, murals. Um, there are, you know, um, historic busts in there. There, there's just so much that they, they, they're really treating it as it would be. You know, in a museum rather than a City Hall. Uh, they are very thorough, as the mayor alluded to earlier, that, you know, we're not coming in with wind decks and sponges. It's, it's a very detailed process, uh, very specialized process, and we're very confident, um. That this company is going to be able to, to carry this procedure out. Um, taking it a step further, a lot of textiles in the building and those tend to hold, obviously, more of that odor. Same vendor will be coming in with different subcontractors, treating all those and that, you know, we talk about the fact that. They're going to be in City Hall probably for the next two to three months doing this. This isn't something that happens overnight. Our biggest concern right now is getting, um, getting everything cleaned and safe for everyone to return. Uh, but this cleanup process will, will extend on for, uh, for months. Uh, we, we did, uh, go through the Archives office. Uh, we identified everything that was to be salvaged. That was a huge hurdle in the process, as I mentioned earlier. Our goal is to, uh, basically demolish that room and remove all those burned and, um. Uh, stained and affected materials, get them out of the building because they will continue to off-gas. So as of right now, we plan on removing the documents from that space. Um, through the day, Wednesday and Thursday, and then Friday afternoon, we will start the demolition process. They feel pretty confident that they will have that room demoed by, uh, the end of business or the end of the day on Saturday. If not, we have Sunday built in as a buffer. Um, beyond, uh, the Archives office, we are going to have to, uh, remove the floor in one of the purchasing offices that is directly adjacent to the Archives. Um, that space would have received water damage and obviously, we don't want to leave, um, leave that space untouched. To the naked eye, you would think there were no problems in there, but we just want to make sure. We extend out, we're getting great cooperation from our insurance company, from these vendors. Um, one of the things that did come up now, giving that space over to the vendors, we've now lost our handicap access to the building. Um, so that basically means we had to come up with an alternative route. I met with a, uh, a local company this morning. And on Friday afternoon, working with our building department, inspectional services, we have a, uh, we have a company coming in to install a handicap ramp. It'll be on the, uh, Warren Street side of the building. We'll lose a couple of parking spots along the walkway leading to the main entrance. But that will provide us handicap ac- access to the building. Um, so that, that's what, you know, was one of the big hurdles and, you know, we, we recognize the fact that by closing that lower level off. We, we would not be able to provide those folks with a service. So, um, the mayor's office felt very strongly about getting that, so that is in process. Um, and like I said, it's, it's just, this process is completely evolving, you know, as far as even this morning. I met with the, uh, one of the vendors and we started getting into the vaults in the basement, you know, records, uh. Each department almost has their own vault down there and each of those vaults has records in. So, you know, we're just, it, it almost seems like we're turning, you know, every corner we turn, we're finding something new, but. You know, we're on it, we're, we're, we're marching forward and, you know, I think at the end of the day, um. City Hall will be in better shape than it, than it was before the fire.
Thank you so much, Joe. Turn it back to you.
Yes, thank you. So first of all, thank you, Joe, for, you know, he's the guy who's been on scene through, I don't know if he's had any chance to sleep for the last four or five days. Uh, or will for the next two or three months, but so thanks, Joe. Thanks to all the management team and our staff. Um, so one thing we want to make sure, uh, Jill will pick up in, in a minute to talk about where, what we're doing with staff. But these, um, uh, blowers that are there now are really loud, so we have to be sensitive to what, what's going to be the, how, um. How are people going to be able to handle five, six, seven hours of work with those things blowing i- in their ears? So that's why we're trying to think, um, strategically. And I also want to thank Senator Tarr and, and Rep Ferrante who reached out. And they really want to help us, uh, move this, this along. As you know, you guys voted recently for some bonding, for some projects. There's been talk about a restoration at City Hall in terms of electrical and fire suppression. For years and we got it going. Um, this was, a- as I said to Joe the other day, this, this was a figurative and literal wake-up call the other night. Um, that this project has to get moved along. And I also did, the, the governor's office reached out to express their, um. You know, concern about it and, and they indeed want to help as well. And I know that Rep Ferrante did meet with Lieutenant Governor a few days ago. So with that, let me just hand it over to Jill to talk about where our staff is, what our plans are. And how we want to keep, um, the city functioning and providing the service to the residents. So Jill.
Thank you. Welcome, Jill.
Thank you. Thank you, Ma- Madam President, through you to the council. Um, so my role in most of this over the last few days has been keeping city business moving ahead as much as possible. Um, again, we cannot thank enough the Gloucester Fire Department's response, DPW's response. Um, now that's quickly moving DPW onto IT because we can't do anything these days without the support of Ryan and his incredible team. Um, and all the department heads in the city, Joanne runs a really tight ship over there and has a lot of, uh, work that she does that. It's really tough to do offline. We did, it's eerily reminiscent of when we first gathered after COVID. So we have had kind of a practice run for this, so the team is ready to roll. Um, some of the highlights, so the mayor's office has been able to establish an off-site space in the Browns Mall. For those who haven't been there, it was formerly the Community Impact Unit. We retain that space, um, as a rental through the IT department because they use it often for, uh, kind of alternate location. To support the IT department and run testing and things like that. So, uh, Ryan and his team had that up and running very quickly. Melissa and Pam from our office are there, regular business hours every day. And that is where the line, um, that is now City Hall main line, which is for the public and all these city counselors. It's out on our Facebook page, it's also on the website, but it's nine, seven, eight. Three, two, five. Five, one, zero, zero. Um, just as an aside for all of you who helped us through this other side of the project, the, the reason we. The antiquated phone lines are run by copper wires at City Hall, so it's not as simple to just forward phones. Um, you guys, thank you, approved a loan order for us to move forward with a, uh, phone, a citywide phone system. That will eventually make this fifty-one hundred City Hall's main line. So, um, because we have that project going, I mean, there's a lot of moments that we've seen the forethought of this administration. And with the support of the council, we were more prepared than we would normally have been. So again, if anybody needs to reach a City Hall office, please call nine, seven, eight, three, two, five, five, one, zero, zero. Um, it'll be answered by the mayor's staff and we'll relay that phone call. Uh, on to the proper department. Um, we are limiting time in the, in City Hall, uh, as much as possible. Again, we really want to make room for the contractors to get done what they need to get done. Um, we, it's incredibly important that we have the handicap access. We do know that the clerk's office in particular has some work that, um, can only be done in-house because they have some computers and things that are hooked up to state. Computers, so vital records being one of the most important. So Joanne and her team, thank you, Joanne, um, and Grace, they've been incredible. Um, they're in there for limited hours each day, so if the public needs to reach them, again, you can either do so via. Uh, email or online services whenever you can use them or use that main number and we will get you to Joanne. And she is able then to meet. And she is able then to meet anyone who needs to pick up documents or sign something. Um, she can use that Browns Hall office to do that. Um, treasure collector, also one that gets a lot of uh, a lot of traffic in city hall. Um, they have a Dropbox outside of city hall where payments can be dropped. And John is there on a regular basis to um, pick those up. Um, I'm sure the number one question among folks right now is their beach stickers. We are currently working on a relocation of the beach stickers and it looks like we may have the opportunity to partner with the library on this, which we're incredibly thankful for. So more information to come on that. But again, please, please, please encourage your residents and your constituents to apply for their beach stickers online. It's up and it's running. It's as simple as a dog license. Um, please, please, please access those services online. Um, we've added as much staff as we can to get that out and running. So there'll be more updates on beach stickers. Um, auditing, H R, legal, um, have all had the opportunity, payroll are really set up to work from home when necessary. So thank you for all of their staff for being so um, supportive of that and, and willing to do so. Ryan and his team have had to, you know, bring on some additional laptops, but they're doing a great job. The assessors, I believe they had a, a board of assessors meeting today. So they've been in and out of the building for limited time, but they too, um, they have the drill um, all figured out to serve the public when needed. So again, please email them if you need to access them or call that main line. Uh, purchasing has been a tough one. We had a bunch of bid openings um, scheduled for Friday, that then got rescheduled for Monday. Uh, purchasing is going to have to be moved into the council conference room. Uh, because the basement and Cairo's will be closed for several months to the public. Uh, for the meantime, thank you to the Community Impact Unit. We moved all those public bid openings over across the street on Middle Street. Um, again, the cooperation among city departments has been incredible. Um, so you will find Stacy and Michelle and her team in the council conference room in the upcoming months. And our goal is obviously to get this, the main floor and the city services open to the public uh, as soon as possible. Um, what else do I have in here? I think, I mean, most importantly, I, again, I just want to say thank you. Our team has been incredible. Um, the leadership of the mayor has been incredible and supportive. You, you all in the city council um, is helpful in getting the word out. So I'm sure we're, we're happy to answer questions. We know you guys want to get back to city hall. Um, we've been working really hard towards that. Uh, and here we are with scaffolding in place uh, in the next couple of weeks. So um, I'm sure unless mayor, you have other things you want me to cover. That's what I had and we're happy to answer questions.
Yeah, I think.
Thank you, Jill. Um.
No.
Mayor?
Not a pressing, yeah, we, we're ready for any questions. That pretty much is the presentation from us.
Okay, um, first question is uh, Councilor Jota.
Well, I'm glad everyone's okay and thank you for the um, you know, City of Gloucester Fire Department. And like, May, like you said, this is a potential wake, this is a wake-up call. So wondering in the future would the archives or certain departments will be separate or can they be separate from city hall into a different location? So things will be, you know, just, I guess, not all clumped into one, if that's possible.
Well, some stuff is already stored in the basement at the post office, you know, so there are some things I guess we could look at, but the, the prime directive now is to get this project uh, faster tracked. It's already fast-tracked, but faster tracked to get the fire suppression and electrical upgrades in place and get the project fully funded and finished. You know, and I guess we'll, we'll have to think about those other things uh, uh, in a parallel course, but like my goal now is to just move this along. As I said, it's been the talking phase for many years. The funding phase started several months ago and then when we came on board, we, we pushed it into high gear and this is pushing it much faster and high gear.
Um, our C A O has her hand raised. Um, Jill and then uh, Council Grow.
Thank you. I just wanted to update that. Um, I also, I, I just happened to have a meeting with um, one of our volunteers on the cemetery's committee who works very closely with the archives committee to your question, Councilor Jota, and um, we're very aware of the kind of client, the, the necessary, what you really need for a real true archives department, which is um, climate controlled, no sprinklers, blah, blah, blah. And so that will very much be a part of the conversation. We started the first internal conversation about um, how this may or may not impact the design of the city hall project that's already in progress. And I believe the city hall restoration committee has a meeting tentatively scheduled for May fifteenth. The mayor's trying to get um, the chair of that building committee, of which Joe Lassito is a member sworn in right bef- right before this all happened. Um, anyway, so that, Councilor Jota will absolutely be a part of the discussion as we move forward. And um, if that means, I know Representative Ferrante is uh, very much committed to what a, what a true professional archives looks like. And uh, we will not be shy about asking the state for support as we move forward in that.
Great. Thank you. Um, so Council Grow, then Memard, and then Gross. Council Grow, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. I thought, I thought Scott was ahead of me, but um, just very quickly, um, you know, I know it's early days. Do we have any understanding of what the cause of the fire was? And then secondly, um, you're going to have a lot of people working in these offices. Have you thought, given any thought to issues of uh, document security and private, privacy issues in terms of uh, sensitive information that might be in files or a subject to being looked at? Um, public, you know, public information.
Uh, well, to answer your first question, it, it is uh, still under investigation. Jill had texted the chief right before the meeting and we're still waiting for a, a final answer on that. Um, as far as security, yes, I mean, that was one of the concerns we had with just the cleaning crew going through is what might have been left on desks. But um, you know, that's going to be part of the equation as we move forward because you got to make sure that, you know, people aren't shoulder surfing where they shouldn't be shoulder surfing. So I don't know if Jill has, if there's been any specific conversation among the managers beyond that, but that is something we're obviously sensitive to and making sure that privacy is respected and no sensitive information is um, falls into the wrong hands.
Thank you, Joe. Would you like to comment?
Sure. I just would add, um, as the mayor said, it's still undetermined the cause of the fire. Um, obviously, if as information becomes available, we'll share it with the council and the public. Um, when it comes to privacy of documents, uh, H R being the kind of one of the number ones that we're most concerned about. Uh, Holly, again, I, I really cannot thank the management team enough. Holly spent that beautiful Saturday, what was it? Seventy-five degrees from ten to four at city hall. Um, there observing the entire time that her office was being cleaned so that all, nobody accessed all the file cabinets are locked, any things that can't be locked. Um, she supervises all of, all of that work. So Joe, um, all the department heads in city hall know, go directly to Joe if you have those concerns and we're working through them as we go. So um, yeah, it's, it's kind of amazing what we had to pull off in the last couple of days, but thank you, counselor.
Thank you, Jill. Um, Joe has his hand raised. So Joe, you have the floor.
So to, to further expand on that, so yeah, the general cleaners, obviously, we've, we've made arrangements with our department heads. Now, when it comes to the document restoration, the company that uh, Maya has hired are sit, uh, HIPAA certified um, a vendor. So they basically, you know, they have all the credentials. Um, and they have the processes in place that um, you know, they, this is what they do. It's, it's not just the run-of-the-mill, you know, company. They are, uh, they do work in major hospitals, uh, major firms. So, you know, they made that very clear to us early on that they were in fact HIPAA certified.
Thank you. Um, Council Memard.
Uh, thank you all. Uh, I guess we're all very lucky that it could have been so, so much worse so quickly. Although it's daunting to hear about the uh, impact of the smoke damage throughout the building and on records and on the workplace environment. Uh, I, I didn't hear Jill speak to the auditor's office and I'm sure that Kenny and his crew are uh, working hard on closing the books for the years. It's right upon us and as budget finance chair, I just have to ask if they're being taken care of.
Yeah. Good question, counselor.
Yes, thank you. Um, Kenny's team, again, uh, COVID gave us a good practice run for this, right? Kenny's team is uh, all working remotely. They're all set up to do that already. We got the, the vendor warrant was due on Friday. Uh, he was great and flexible. Um, I happen to be working out of, I went to the annex on Friday to work, so I brought all their warrants over and delivered them to city hall. So um, we, auditor's office is up and running. Um, and you will get to see Kenny tomorrow at our B N F meeting, but um, yeah, they're up and running and, and closing the books. And I guess it's a very busy time of year for, in, in many of our offices, getting ready for summer and closing out our fiscal year. So thank you for the question, counselor.
Thank you, Jill. Uh, Council Gross.
Yes, um, a question for Joe. I got a couple of questions for Joe. Um, so is the cleanup going to be done um, when there is people in the building? It's going to be off-hours cleanup? Are they going to be working around the clock? Or how are they going to be doing it?
So um, it'll be ongoing. Um, the brunt of the cleaning work that's been done in the offices, fortunately, we've been obviously vacant. Um, the additional work, so we've got through every office in the building, floor to about six, seven feet, all depending on the height of the cleaners. Um, but all that additional cleaning with a scaffolding and all that in the offices will be done off-hours. So it'll be, you know, Friday afternoon, Saturday, Sunday. And that's why this process is going to get drawn out a little bit longer. Um, so we're, you know, obviously being cognizant of people working in offices. So it would be off-hours. We will have uh, personnel in place when this cleaning is going on as we have uh, last weekend and moving forward to this weekend and, and, and beyond.
So, so there'll always be someone from, um, you know, even if it's a night shift or an after-hours shift crew, there'll always be somebody from D P W or the custodial services or somewhere.
Absolutely.
In the building with them to answer questions or, um, alright, that's good to know. And did you say, I, I forgot, what was it? Two to four weeks or four to six weeks that the blowers will be um, in the building?
Yeah, so we're, we're, they're estimating four to six weeks. Um, and you know, hopefully we can, we can, you know, now we're getting into warmer weather, you know, the windows will stay up a little bit longer that hopefully will help us. I think we'll know a lot better next week after we completely demo that room. So that room will be stripped down to the studs. And as I said, I mean, that room is still permeating um, in off-gassing because all those materials are still in there. You know, they, they're very confident that once, once they're able to, to basically remove all those items, then the, the odor should go down. And hopefully it becomes more like two to three weeks rather than four to six, but they, you know, they're going to be very con- conservative.
And, and while you have Cairo staged, are you going to be installing, you know, dry piping the uh, fire suppression in the ceiling or is that going to be uh, run some other way?
Yeah, unfortunately, I think it's, it's too soon. I mean, that system would have to be designed. Um, you know, I hope would've been nice if we were a little further along in the process, but we have had those conversations even as far as rebuilding the archives. You know, do we, do we kinda put it back the way it was or do we, do we move forward and we've actually um, you know, we're going to talk about that with our design team and how do we incorporate kind of rebuilding and putting things back together. So that was uh, that was brought up earlier in the week with uh, with the team. So.
And, and my next question is for, and my final one is for um, the mayor and, and Ms. Cahill, it, since you, we're going to have these um, these air scrubbers in there and the mayor, you alluded that they're kind of loud. I imagine they sort of sound like a jet engine a little bit, not uh, on rather annoying noise that would be um, you know, somewhat um, difficult to tolerate for eight hours um, or, you know, on the ten-hour day or whatever it is on Thursday. Was there any thought to um, you know, any of the rooms that do not have public um, offices that do not have any public, true public um, uh, connections, you know, purchasing, auditor, um, different, different ones like that into some of the um, spaces that are in possibly some of the school buildings, O'Malley and the high school I'm thinking about in particular.
I don't think we've thought that far ahead about school buildings, but you know, as we, Joe mentioned earlier, we've, we've moved my office to the Browns Mall. So we're certainly open to ideas. Uh, one thing to keep in mind that I didn't mention, they are, they are loud. This, there's no question. But um, the, the tailor, Tyler from the um, Service Master said we could turn them down while we're, while we're during work hours. So put it from the max, which it was at, for instance, uh, behind the counter at the, in the clerk's office, down to minimum, made a huge difference, but it is still noticeable. More like um, I, I guess twice as loud as those noise makers, you know, the um, the, the sound machines for privacy. But I could see how after, you know, four or five hours of that, it might start to uh, drive some people berserk. So we just have to see how it goes as we move along. Um, but purchasing was already planned on moving out to do some work in their office, but now that they're right near ground zero, they've got to move upstairs anyway. So space is at a premium, but the, point well taken. We can certainly check with the schools if it's going to be an extended amount of time or if indeed it turns out that it's just not workable the way we have it. I mean, if the blower outside of my office near the uh, the water fountain is going, is that going to really, is it going to be difficult for the folks at the treasures, the collectors' window to conduct business? So time will tell.
Um, so Jill, you have your hand raised and then we'll um, circle to uh, Tracy, um, Council O'Neill. Um, but you have the floor, Jill.
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to further answer that question. So the mayor um, and Ryan and I met at our E O C location at O'Malley yesterday. Um, so the short version is yes, we actually, we, we're, we're trying to walk that balance of how much work do we put into moving all the people and all the technology before we know really what the extent of the time is going to be. So um, we've been exploring, uh, we explored the E O C at O'Malley. We, we were talking about the visitor center um, up at Sageford Park. Uh, I mean, we're really, you know, there's always, there's some space available at the Veterans Service Building. Um, those staff, um, I'm thinking of Holly and Joanne in particular, who kind of lived through the um, that when city hall was condemned and had to move, have been really helpful in us brainstorming. So it's that balancing act, Council Gross, between um, how much work to put on D P W and I T to make those moves um, versus how long are we going to be gone? So hopefully we won't be out of commission for very long and, and we won't have to do that. And again, um, we've, we've been, we're very lucky that uh, we're, we know how to do some of this work remotely now. Um, and we're really efficient that way as, as you guys show us on your city council meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council O'Neill.
Thank you. Um, so back to the archives, uh, it's, well, am I correct in understanding that you said they would be cryogenically cleaned, photocopied and returned to city hall? And does that mean that we photocopied? So will there be two sets of the archives that are photocopied and clean? And will they be in the same location?
Um, mayor or Jill Cahill?
I, well, I think, well, I answered the question about the, the cryo uh, cleaning. But as far as the same location, it sort of circles back to what Jill said earlier, what Joe alluded to, that that's part of the conversation. Are we just going to stick things back where they were? Are we going to look for Plan B, which would be the long-term solution? But Joe, if, if you're still out there, if you could maybe give a, put a little more meat into the bones for the, the cleaning process.
No, I think you misunderstood my question. Um, I, I'm wondering, are there going to be two copies?
Right, right. Yeah, because he did say photocopies that I, I knew you, but.
They'll be cleaned and then photocopied and then returned. So will there be the originals and the photocopies? And shouldn't they be, if there's two sets, should they not be stored in different locations?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Separate them for safety. Joe, if you're there.
Yeah, so I, you know, the high-level answer is yes, uh, depending on the damage. Um, you know, if they can be cleaned, in fact, in, and for the most part, from what we've, we've seen, visually seen, and obviously we're not document experts, um, because the fire department responded as quickly as they did and as efficiently as they did, the records in there are not a total loss by any means. They're actually, you know, and, and mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're in pretty good shape considering what that room endured. Um, so, you know, we'll, we'll kind of drive the bus on that process and we'll, I think we'll be able to dictate what we get from them. Um, you know, whether it be, you know, I mentioned copied and sent back and it, and it, they, we may have the opportunity to digitize them as well. And, you know, we'll talk with Ryan Knowles and his staff and, and obviously the archives folk can and, and see what the best course of action is, but that's, that's one of the procedures. It's, it's typical. They treat them, they photocopy them and then the, you know, the sets come back to us. So we haven't completely determined um, what the process is going to look like, but that's, that was laid out to us. We'll make that uh, decision. You know, once everything is brought off-site and they start really getting a good look at everything.
Okay, so there will be two sets?
There should, there should be, yes.
Okay. And who is going to demo the archive room? Is that the D P W or is that the contractor that, that you're hiring?
So that'll be done by a contractor hired by um, the insurance company.
And is there um, any risk of asbestos in that building? any risk of asbestos in that building?
So uh, yeah, I'm glad you asked, so as part of the process, they brought in a third-party uh invest uh abatement contractor, they, they took multiple samples throughout the space and everything came back negative. If in fact it was asbestos, uh and there has been abatement done over the years. We have, uh we have some reports that show the same thing. Um and so fortunately, in their process, they have to do that and everything came back negative. So if, if that was not the case, then you know, that, that two-month period probably would have been, you know, two months' worth of um uh abatement and all that before they even touched anything. So not saying that there aren't some hidden behind the wall and they deal with those, but everything that they tested, um they had a contractor in there on Friday. Uh samples came back on Monday and everything was clean.
Okay, um. Regarding storage and moving files, is the library, what's going on in the library? Would they be able to help us out? Cuz they're, they're right across the street. And I, I don't know what's going on inside.
So basically, as as part of the process, um the, the cleanup involves and completely entails the uh, you know, the off-site storage of all those records. Um so it's, it's not necessarily something that, you know, we have to deal with. So we're trying to let them, you know, do what they do. Um you know, we're obviously there to assist, but we're not looking to take on additional work. Um but they typically, you know, they have off-site storage facility, facilities that they manage that would be all uh part of the claim. Once everything's built back up and everything's put back together, um then all those records would, you know, would obviously come back to uh City Hall.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um Jill, your hand is raised and then Council Nolan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, and um Council O'Neill, and and I think really for the public as well. I wanna make sure that people understand that while is the fire damage took place in the Archives Office, that is not where the majority of the Archives documents are stored. Um because I, I wanna make sure people understand and and aren't too, couldn't, too worked up about it because we do have an incredible amount of historical documentation. Most of the actual documents are stored within the vaults. Um and the things that would have been in the office were kind of active projects that people were working on. So um I just wanna make sure we, we address that right off the bat, that there was our, our, the city's archive collection was not in this one room. Um the other side of that is when it comes, it's really important for the council and the public to understand that when it comes to the preservation uh and the cleaning of both the ar- archive documents and the paintings and the uh, as you know, we have extensive historical paintings and murals. Um that is in the hands of the professionals that are contracted through our insurance company. Uh so this, so while Joe is overseeing and DPW is overseeing the larger project, we are turning to experts, we know we don't have those experts on staff. We're very lucky to have an incredible group of volunteers who work in our ar- archives. Um but they too are not experts um necessarily in this document uh restoration. So um I just wanna make sure the public is rest assured that one, the archives are not, we're not all in that our office and two, um we are working through this, I mean, and MIAA, our insurance company is essentially the insurance company for all cities and towns. So um we are using the highest level of service we possibly can um and not cutting any corners on any of this. And then one last thing towards the library, um I just wanna thank Jenny Benedict and and the Library Board. Like I said, we're already in conversations with them about the use of some of that space um for relocation of some of what would be city services uh as they expect. Um they needed, they moved when they did because there was an opportunity for the rental space and uh they, they expect to start doing work maybe mid, mid-August. Um so they're being very cooperative and allowing us to use whatever we need over there right now, so I'm gonna thank them as well.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna ask Council Nolan to have the floor, Council O'Neill. Um and then we'll get back to you. Go ahead, Council Nolan, you are muted.
Uh no, I'm not. Um I actually wanna ask a question of Ryan, he's here tonight and we have the new telephone number. Um and also the communication issues with the old analog lines at City Hall. Um and the difficulties that it may incur during communicating from office to office on day-to-day basis. And if you could just give us a little update, um you can even bring it down a notch from his uh IQ level to ours to understand uh the complications and how this is gonna work and what we can do to help him facilitate, facilitate getting the numbers out.
Sure, um so a- as Jill mentioned, we had the kind of um, the uh good fortune to have that, to retain that Browns Mall space. That's one that was wired and had the ability to have the newer phone system put in over there. Um uh in, in addition, so the IT department, we in advance, far in advance of um actually making the switch in City Hall to the new system, we bought a big block of numbers, um which is basically everything that is nine-seven-eight-three-two-five-five-thousand-to-five-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-nine. So we have a thousand numbers in that block, um some of which are in use, some of which are not. Um and that we had kind of actually already been working in my office to plan out where, where those numbers were gonna land. So when Jill said, we need a temporary place for the mayor's office, you put a temporary number together. I said, it doesn't have to be temporary, it can be the, the number that we were planning all along for it. So that's kind of where we landed on that fifty-one-hundred number, cuz that's where we were gonna put them to begin with. Um and so as Jill said, the, the process of moving analog phone numbers is time-consuming. Um it's, it's not hard to do, you know, I, we can contact the carrier, which is Verizon there, and ask them to say either forward that number to a different number, someone calls it, or to port the number altogether to on our side with our newer system. And then we can kind of say, when someone dials this number, ring fifty-one-hundred, and we have done that extensively throughout. You know, there used to be, there's all, all the old DPW numbers, all the old numbers that I'm sure people throughout the city have written on pieces of paper that are hanging on their fridge. Those never went away, those still actually ring DPW, they just, basically, we took the number and say, when someone dials this, ring the, ring the number that the WD, DPW is actually at now. That process takes about two weeks to port numbers. So um kind of given our current, where we are currently, you know, after speaking with Jill and Joe and all, um we kind of said, you know, it's probably not really time to do that extensive of process. The forwarding takes about three days to do, in my experience. So in the same way as we're kind of had a lot of uncertainty, we said, you know, like, let's not, let's not be hasty and spend three days porting the numbers and then say, oh, never mind, can you put them all back? And then three days porting them all, taking the forwarding off. So um I mean, in terms of support, the, you know, the, the biggest piece of support was that you all voted to, you know, fund the project to improve and basically renew the phones across the whole city. Good news of which is actually that the um, the contract for that is going to go out tomorrow. Um we, we've got a vendor selected. Uh we did a pretty extensive interview process, we got over twenty-one responses with the RFP. So it was a lot of work to run through all those and really make the best selection for the city. Um but the good news there is that we will actually begin to be able to start making that, um making those moves, like kind of, you know, moving forward with that project. And um you know, as Joe and Jill have said, that part of the intent of anything that we're gonna do, even short-term demo work and such, you know, we had a lot of wires that just got melted in the walls and right over that office, the, for the legal office, for Jill's office, actually. Um has uh almost no, you know, a lot of the, the wiring is just not able to be salvaged there. So you know, choosing, do we wanna pull new, old copper phone lines in there? Or do we wanna start looking at a more comprehensive plan, as Joe said, that's kind of dov- dovetail into the larger restoration project for City Hall, um and you know, looking at kind of even fast-tracking some of those low voltage and data stuff. So that will allow us to kind of move people to a newer system because I can, I can tell you that the uh, the mayor's staff that's at Brown Mall, Browns Mall, it's have, have felt like they're just, you know, they're, they've hit the twenty, the twenty-first century with um the phone system that they have down there, all the fancy features, like being able to look up someone's phone number on the phone itself. It's um, you know, for them and it's gonna be hard for them to go back, so.
Great, um so Ryan and I spoke briefly this morning um about um where, where our hy- two hybrids stands right now with these delays. And um it's, I think it's premature for us to kind of discuss that, but I think in two weeks when we meet again, maybe you can update us then because you'll have a better assessment of where our targeted date of the beginning of July stands based on the um, the issues that have to be addressed at the auditorium. So um if you could um commit to that, Ryan, in, in the next two weeks, that would be, that'd be great cuz we're getting a lot of pressure from the community as we discussed this morning. And it would be great just to have a, an overview of um what our options are if there is gonna be a further delay. Um so does any other counselor have um a question? Um Council O'Hara, and then I think we should um try to um wrap up. Um go ahead, Council O'Hara, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um I know Counselor Grow asked a question, is there any, any identification of the source of the fire? Um obviously, it was mentioned the sprinkler and burglar alarm. Um I don't know who wants to answer that question, that was a Counselor Grow question that I, I did not hear an answer.
Oh, yes, it's, it's, Jill texted the fire chief right before the meeting started, so we, to get any update. As of this moment, it's still under investigation, so as soon as we get it, it's gonna be, we'll let you folks at the uh council know and let the public know. But at, as, at this moment, we don't have a, a conclusive answer.
Terrific.
Thank you, ma'am.
To parallel with, with um what Joe Lucido had mentioned, as far as I know, we, we talk, I've been a huge advocate of uh fire, fire sprinkler systems in, in every public building, particularly the schools. And I was uh pushing St. Anne's School with the children in there. But I've been involved in two major projects in Gloucester historic buildings, one being the Magnolia Library and the other one being the Meeting House on Middle Street as far as sprinkling, sprinkling them. It's an extremely time-consuming, right from the, the start, which the start is, the engineering takes months to engineer. You literally, a sprinkle ahead has to go into every closet, every office, every nook, every cranny, the elevator pit, the elevator shaft, uh it's time-consuming just to engineer the system. Um time-consuming just to draw it on paper, it takes forever to install it. Very painful, obviously, in a historic building. You have to, where are we gonna go with, how are we gonna run the pipes? How are we gonna work around historic artifacts? Uh you install the pipe, then you have to, to cover the pipe, paint them, cover them with trim. Very, very time-consuming, you start off with running probably into the library, they're gonna run them or into the City Hall, they're gonna run a six or uh, uh, six at, at a minimum to eight to ten-inch main that will have to be dug from Dale Ave into the building. With this all said, this is going to be an astronomical cost, but expense more, more important to the public and to the operations of the, of the um City Hall. How have you given any thought, I know it's early in the parade to um be discussing this, but by the sounds of it, you, you wanna get this sprinkled. And I, I've, I'd be an advocate that we shouldn't be spending one more penny in that building until it is sprinkled. That pipe has to run all the way to the tippy-top of that, of the steeple. And you've got dry systems, wet systems, it's an, it's a huge undertaking. It's gonna be very disruptive to the operations of City Hall. So have you given any thought to that as of yet, Mayor?
Yes, um so I mean, the one good thing is, as I mentioned earlier, it's been talked about for years, but the last few months, with your help, the council's help, we've got, with Margaret's help, Rep Ferrante's help last term, and with the help of the council, just a few months ago, additional funding to get this moving along. And now the governor's office um seemingly offering to help us out a little further. So it's, it, it's gonna be a whole package, it's not just gonna be sprinklers, it's gonna be the electrical, the whole nine yards. But your point is taken, uh Jamie, that it's, it's gonna take time just to get it on paper and then more time to find a, a contractor to do it and more time to install it. But the, prior to this year, nothing was happening, and now something's happening. So until we start, we can't start, and the good news is, we've started.
Terrific. One, one last question real quick, has the insurance company assessed a lo- a loss, potential loss?
I think their first focus was to get uh right to work with the cleanup, um and that'll be coming next. Joe, I don't know if, if you could answer that any further than that.
Yeah, so, so just as you said, their, their focus right now is the cleanup. Um our um assigned adjuster was out on the morning of, for, you know, the morning after. Um and he's just, you know, at this point, he's talking daily with the subcontractors, but he has not been back out on site yet. But uh, like I said, they, they work with them, they're one of their preferred vendors. So I think he puts a lot of faith uh in his subcontractors. But, you know, we, we don't have any indications as of yet. I think the, you know, the initial was, let's get, let's get Gloucester City Hall back up and running and functioning again first.
Great, um so counselors, um thank you and thank you, city administration for updating us. I think this was really helpful. I noticed that there are fifty participants on the call right now, so I think there's a high interest and you've covered everything. So we appreciate, we appreciate the updates you're giving us to share with our constituents. And I also wanted to do a personal shout-out to the clerk's office because with Joanne Sinus's uh leadership, um you know, amazing planning and hard work behind the scenes, so many budget meetings, so many meetings, marriage licenses, dog licenses, so many issues right now. And um Joanne, on behalf of our city council, please let your team know that we totally appreciate their hard work. So um but thank you all for being here and for updating us, much appreciated. Um next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the confirmation of new appointments.
Um I'll turn the meeting over to um Council Nolan.
Thank you, Madam President. So our first order of business would be for the Animal Advisory Committee. For Thomas, Tom Marquette, term to expire two fifteen, two thousand twenty-six. Tom, are you with us tonight?
Can you hear me?
We can, Tom.
All right, I'm with you. Thank you.
If you just wanna give us a little brief description about yourself and why you wanna be on the Animal Advisory Committee?
Um recently retired, moved to the Gloucester area from upstate New York, uh lifelong pharmacist. Um kinda, you know, trying to figure out what uh the post-retirement world looks like, but this is something where I think I can lend some uh expertise and uh wisdom and common sense. So uh I'm just hoping that uh I would get approval for that.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. Is there any questions or comments from the council? All right, here and now, we did meet with Tom at Orange Administration. I'm excited for him to be a new resident to Gloucester, he brings in a lot of knowledge and he's already jumped in with two feet and he may even go further, uh very well-rounded individual. So with that being said, I'll start with the committee report. On a motion by Council Major to seconded by Council O'Hara, the Orange Administration Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council appoint Thomas Tom Marquette to the Animal Advisory Committee, term to expire two fifteen, twenty-six, and I so move.
Motions made by Council Nolan, it was seconded by Council O'Hara, is there a discussion? Uh Council Memard.
Welcome, Tom, um as the current council liaison to the Animal Advisory Committee. Your appointment is very welcome and we'll, I'll afford to working with you and the rest of the committee. I just have a quick question for the mayor and Jill, whether Tom's uh joining the committee brings us to a quorum so they can meet again, because they have not been able to meet for three years.
Um Jill, are you still there? Could you answer that question?
I think we lost Jill.
Um.
I, I think, I think this was a quorum maker, so I believe that there will be a quorum. Um but obviously, we can ask the administration later as well, Jill is back.
Sorry, I stepped away for the ladies room, I, I missed a question.
Oh, the question was, is there, is there gonna be a quorum now that Tom has been um appointed to the Animal Advisory Committee?
Um I do not know that off the top of my head, but I can get back to you with that answer. I know um our biggest challenge, I know there were certain ward counselors we were looking for representation from. So I will check with Melissa, who handles the appointments, and send a communication to the, to the council.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors, uh um Madam Clerk?
I am not sure if Mr. Marquette has come in before the fire to get. I am not sure if Mr. Marquette has come in before the fire to get sworn in. And if he hasn't, um, he can reach out to that, the mayor's office, and I will contact him and make arrangements to meet him outside City Hall and swear him in so he can, um, participate in the meeting.
Thank you. Tom, I'm, I'm sure you heard that, um, that summary from Madam Clerk, so.
That would be great if I could make that up. Yep.
Great. Any further discussion, counselors? Um, seeing none, a roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Thanks for stepping up, yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Tom.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Thank you. Uh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
Um, I would like to remove the minutes of the May 8th, 2023 agenda on the agenda. Um, anyone else like to remove anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none, um, I think I can, um, just state on my removal is that I just wanted to be clear that, um, we do not have the minutes for that meeting. It was, the meeting was last night. So, um, I just want you to be aware that the, the minutes are not, um, on the agenda for approval tonight. Um, so, um, is there a motion to approve the agenda as noted? Go ahead.
Back in.
Thank you. Made by, uh, Counsel Grow, I think it was seconded by Counsel Gross. Um, roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yep.
Counsel Majota?
Yes, sorry.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of May 4th?
I'll turn the meeting over to our BNF Chair, Counsel Memard.
Bear with me if Vera is a little vocal during this, um, report. Uh, Budget and Finance Committee meeting has, uh, six items for your consideration this evening from our, uh, May 4th, uh, meeting last week. The first is a memorandum from the Harbor Master with a 2023 SA 25 in the amount of $15,500. Do you want me to go ahead with the motion or are there any questions preliminarily?
Um, I think you should make the motion first.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council approve a supplemental appropriation, 2023 SA 25 in the amount of $15,500 from Waterways General Stabilization Fund transfers to Enterprise Fund, account number is noted, to Waterwise, Waterways Enterprise Fund Purchase of Services, account number is noted. And this is for the purpose of replacing and installing a new D- Davit hoist at the I-4C-2 Harbor Cove Lobster Marina, and I so move.
Um, the motion was made by Counsel Memard. I think I heard Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion, counselors? Um, do you want us to do a narrative, Counsel Memard?
Sure. Uh, I think you should all be familiar with this at this point, based on our prior discussions with the lobstermen who, uh, are birthed at the I-4C-2, um, parcel. And this is, uh, a follow, follow-up, um, from, uh, our Harbor Master TJ Shimataro, uh, moving aggressively ahead to fulfill this requirement of upgrading the, the Davit and Hoist system that's at the I-4C-2. And he's, uh, he's gotten right on it and, uh, we're thrilled to, uh, support him and the fishermen at that location.
Thank you. Um, further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Thank you. Next order of business, Counsel Memard?
Uh, the second item from Budget and Finance is a memorandum from the Chief Administrative Officer requesting our acceptance of a mass call, three, grant in the amount of $500,000. Um, and this is on a mo- on a motion by myself, seconded by Counsel Worthley. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 4453A, a contract amendment to the federal grant from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration passed through the Massachusetts Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Abuse, excuse me, Substance Addiction Services uh, for a fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 Massachusetts Collaborative for Action Leadership and Learning, three, or mass call, three, Substance Misuse Prevention Program Grant in the amount of $500,000. The total grant, the total contract maximum obligation is $991,666. The purpose of this grant is to support the regional youth prevention network to prevent and to reduce the use of substances and delay first use among regional youth. The fiscal year 2024 grant period for expenditure of these funds is $250,000 from July 1, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. The fiscal year 2025 grant period for expenditure of these funds is $250,000 from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, and there is no local match required for this grant. Nice to move.
Motion made by Counsel Memard, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion? Uh, do, is there a narrative, Counsel Memard?
Uh, not a specific narrative. I'm sorry, Counsel Worthley isn't with us because he was, uh, thrilled and supportive of this project at our committee meeting. But, uh, working with, with our, um, Board of Health, uh, this is a, a program that, that, uh, we coordinate with teenagers in the, through the high school and school, through the schools. And in addition to Gloucester, there are seven other communities, I believe it's seven, uh, that we are as funding through this program on a municipal level.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill? Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Um, the yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
I'll be myself with item.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, Counsel Memard, sorry about that.
I, I warned you, there were six items. We're on to three uh, from Budget and Finance. Next is a memorandum from our, um, Management Information Systems Director, Ryan Knowles, requesting acceptance of a budget, state budget earmark funding in the amount of $70,000. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law, 4453A, a state grant for the Massachusetts Marketing Partnership passed through the Massachusetts Office of Tourism and of Travel and Tourism, a state budget earmark in the amount of $50,000. And this is for the purpose of information technology improvements at the Rosebaker Senior Center and the grant period's April 4th, 2023 through June 30th, 2023. And there is no local match or in-kind requirement. This is the first of two motions for the total amount of $70,000. And I so move.
Okay.
Um, motion made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion?
This is something, again, that Ryan has been working, uh, to secure the funding for. These are projects that we've previously discussed, but this is, uh, play the improving technology, uh, the, the hub at the Rosebaker Senior Center and providing, um, internet access and, uh, uh, internet, uh, services to our seniors populations.
Thank you. Um, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Uh, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Next order of business, Counsel Memard?
The second half of this memorandum from our Management Information Director relates to uh, a recommendation for accepting $20,000 um, for the purpose of a geographic information system, GIS, and updates primarily used by the auditors of, but, excuse me, by the assessor's office as well as other city departments. But on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law, 4453A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Marketing Partnership passed through the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism, a state earmark, a state budget earmark in the amount of $20,000 for the purpose of geographic information systems or GIS updates in the city, and the grant period is from April 4th, 2023 through June 30th, 2023, and there is no local match or in-kind requirement. Nice to move.
A motion made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Um, is there a narrative, Counsel Memard?
The way, uh, the way Brian described this relates to a, a, basically a aerial mapping of the city at quite high resolution. It was remarkable to hear him describe it, and this is primarily for use by uh, city offices, not, not the, not the map geo thing that the public accesses, but this is more specifically for the use of offices like our, our assessor's office and also the engineering office.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow? Counsel Grow?
I just muted myself. Yes, please.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Um, the yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Next order of business, Counsel Memard?
Yes, there are, uh, two items that we're looking at from our Economic Development Director, Sal DiStefano. The first is a acceptance, requesting our acceptance of a pop-up retail incubator program grant in the amount of $25,000. And the second one relates to an informational display signs program grant, also in the amount of $50,000. And I'll go ahead with the first motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law, 4453A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Office of Business Development passed through the North Shore Alliance for Economic Development, the 2023 Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program in the amount of $25,600. And this is for the purpose of supporting the pop-up Gloucester Retail Program, a pop-up program held in a commercial unit in the building owned by Action Inc. at 206 Main Street. The grant period is from January 2nd, 2023 through June 30th, 2023, and there is no local match or in-kind requirement. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a narrative, Counsel Memard?
Uh, this is a continuation of the pop-up program that Sal in the city action property in the new building where Cameron's used to be, and this is a continuing on second phase, second year.
Um, further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman? Yes, Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Um, next order of business?
The second half of, uh, Sal's presentation to us for acceptance is, uh, a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law, 4453A, a state grant from the Massachusetts Office of Business Development passed through the North Shore Alliance for Economic Development, the 2023 Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program in the amount of $50,000. And this is for the purpose of supporting the kiosk program, which is a solar-powered downtown informational display signage program. Uh, as Sal described it to us, there are, uh, four kiosks that will be placed and managed by, uh, the, the, the vendor. The grant period is for, from January 2nd, 2023 through June 30th, 2023. And again, there is no local match or in-kind requirement, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Members, seconded by Counsel Gross. Is there a discussion or narrative, Counsel Memard?
Uh, Sal was very good to present us with, uh, actual photographs and a technical description of how these systems work, but they are programmable information kiosks that can be updated that, on a regular basis, uh, highlighting various access to, was, city services and commercial activities. And the, uh, Sal had explored various options, and he's looked at these prototypes and, uh, in, in various, uh, communities where they're already in, in place, and he is thrilled that he is not going to bring these to Gloucester, and there will be a program analyzing where to place each of these four units and secure them in a way that's safe and, uh, secure.
Great. Further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, um, roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill? Um, Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Thank you.
Two, two more to go. Um, next one is a memorandum from our DPW Director and a 2023 SBT 11 in the amount of $2,500. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council approve a supplemental budgetary transfer, 2023 SBT 11 in the amount of $2,500 from our DPW engineering salaries and wages, temporary account number is noted to the DPW recycle overtime labor account number is noted. And this is for the purpose of covering overtime costs for recycling days that are still left in the fiscal year 2023, and I so move.
Second, second.
Uh, motions made by Counsel Memard. I think it was seconded by Counsel Grow. Um, is there, um, a narrative, Counsel Memard?
Uh, nothing really to add to this at this point, no.
Um, further discussion, counselors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel O'Neill? Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross?
Yes.
Counsel Grow?
Yes.
Counsel Majota?
Yes.
Counsel Memard?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, let's have it, eight in favor, one absent, Counsel Worthley. Thank you. Um, final order of business, Counsel Memard?
Thank you. Item number six from Budget and Finance this evening is a memorandum from our Director of Elder Services, Elise Nagra, requesting our acceptance of donations totaling $2,400, which is the corrected amount, $2,400. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law, Chapter 4453A, to support the council on aging in the total amount of $2,400 from the following members and business partners within our community. And I will list those, Ruth Bertwell, Margaret Cornell, Fred Cowan, and Richard Gardner, Constance Condon, Marion Hasselgard, Susan Lovett, Marilyn Grant, Jerry Favolaro, Josephine Prudenza, Jose Malat, Malikna, Malikno, Robert McCray, William Newhall, Joanne Libro, Mary Palazola, Jerry Favolaro again, and Marilyn Grant again, for a. Joanne Libro, Mary Palazola, Jerry Favolaro again, and Marilyn Grant again, for a total of two thousand four hundred dollars for our Council on Aging, and I so move.
Second.
Um, motion made by Council Memard and seconded by Council Gross. Is there a narrative, Council Memard?
This is, uh, part of the ongoing support within the community for our Council on Aging and the activities they offer at the Rose Baker Senior Center, so thank you all to the listed donors.
Thank you. Um, further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote. Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
The yeses have it. Eight in favor, one absent. Council Worthley. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The ordinance and administration standing committee report of May first.
Council Nolan.
We have no items under this heading tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor, um, Madam Clerk, next order of business.
The Planning and Development Standing Committee report of May third.
Um, Council Grow.
We had, uh, two items, uh, on the agenda. We have, uh, one is going to be our scheduled public hearing this evening. Second one is the ongoing, uh, discussion with East Main Street, uh, modification, special permit for the, uh, portable housing unit issue that's being, uh, talked about. That has been continued, uh, at a request of the applicant till May seventeenth at P and D, so if you're interested in that issue, I would suggest tuning in on May seventeenth, Wednesday. That's it.
Thank you. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The first scheduled public hearing, Public Hearings twenty-twenty-three dash zero nineteen, Special City Council Permit twenty-twenty-three dash oh oh five, modification, Special City Council Permit twenty-twenty dash zero zero four, Polly Point Road number one, map one forty-six, lot twenty-eight, Gloucester zoning ordinance section three point one point six parentheses B, built in heights in excess of thirty-five feet to increase height by three feet, two inches in the R twenty district.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and, um, welcome Joel Favazza, the attorney representing his client. Council, uh, Council Favazza, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an opposite address of one twenty-three Main Street. I'm going to share my screen with you, walk through the presentation.
Joel, could you be a little bit louder?
I, I certainly could be. That's a rare request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I am here on behalf of Barry. I'm Goldman, and we are at one Polly Point Road. This will look familiar to both those on the P and D Subcommittee and also councilors who were here back in twenty twenty, as this is, uh, property that was previously permitted by this council. What is happening here is we have an existing single-family home, constructed in nineteen ninety-one. Current owners have had it, uh, thoroughly inspected, and, uh, as part of the renovation, there's a lot of structural repair that has to happen, so they are taking down portions and rebuilding, and they are reusing the portions that they can reuse. And so this is why we're calling this, you know, trying to get to a green design, one, to try and keep energy efficient, and two, they are trying to reuse um, the portions of the property that do not need to be, um, fully demolished and taken away. Again, by way of background, in November of twenty twenty, there was a, um, decision adopted that granted a high permit allowing a maximum height of forty-two feet, four inches of an average grade for a prior design of this, um, renovation rebuild. There's a cute little copy of it, in case you guys thought I was messing with you, it's real. Um, background, so, um, basically, the plans were put together for the last approval before the start of pandemic. The relief was granted, and pricing out when it was going to, um, actually cost to construct this thing. And as time went on, it became more and more obvious that this budget was just kind of ballooning out of control. So they had to go back to the drawing table and try and, um, revise some of the design, try and save a little more of the existing structure, try and sacrifice a few amenities they're hoping to have and get a redesign that, you know, is still staying within the budget they had, um, hopes for, at least, you know, somewhere close to that. The big change here is the observation deck. Again, uh, I'll explain in a second. The original relief was forty-two feet, four inches. The new requested relief is forty-seven feet, one inch. Um, and that request has been favorably referred out P and D after a site visit last month. So the relief, despite this project's, you know, many facets, was before you, is simply, uh, request to modify the existing special permit to allow for the increase in maximum allowable height. When you modify a special permit, you, um, basically look to see to make sure the interests of the neighborhood and the city are not impaired, make sure the occupant provides due notice in a public hearing, which is what we're in the middle of right now, and then good cause is shown. And one of the important things I want to talk about is we have, um, you know, the height as calculated, um, by the GZO, and then we have kind of like the realistic height, right? And so you'll see the existing permit shows you the average pre-construction grade, and as you all know, pre-construction grade comes from taking the elevation of every proposed corner of the building, adding them up, and then averaging them out. And so even though, um, nothing's been built yet, just between the two designs, average grade has gone down nine inches, which means something that was thirty feet tall above average grade for the previous design would now be thirty feet, nine inches tall, even though it's the same thing, the, um, average grade calculation has gone down. Secondly, because more of the first floor of the building is being able to use, be used, or reused, rather, the first floor elevation used to be pegged at sixty-one foot, two inch, our elevation is sixty-one, two, and, um, the, the top for first floor elevation now is sixty-two foot, which is the elevation level, not the height level, so I know I'm getting a little rambly here, but you have, um, elevation sixty-two, so the, the ten inch difference we're trying to get to is that if you measured wherever this first floor lands in height above sea level, it was going to be sixty-one foot, two inches, now it's going to be sixty-two feet, right? So between the nine-inch loss in average grade and the ten-inch gain in, um, floor height, first floor, you have a structure that, per the GZO calculation, is now going to be four feet, nine inches taller than it was otherwise. In reality, if someone stood there, if I could snap my fingers and build both houses next to each other, and you stood on the ground and looked up, you would only see a difference of about three feet, two inches, but the mathematical calculation per the GZO is four foot, nine inches. Um, and that's going to run a set here. So another thing to keep in mind is that everything showing green is allowable by right. This lot is well oversized for the district. This, um, structure is an allowable use, being a single-family home, and it is set back, uh, incredibly far from all of the property lines, well in excess of their required side, front, and rear yard setbacks. So if not for, um, the existing skylights above the garage, and if not for the observation deck they're looking to put out there, everything in green is allowable by rights. All we're talking about, we're talking about the impact of this permit is about those two that are highlighted in orange, one of which, uh, is already there in the ground today. And again, just to really hammer home that whole average grade thing, so this new design has forty-five corners, and they had to go out and take the elevation of all forty-five corners and, um, and do the math here, and that's why, even though the house itself is pretty much staying where it is now, um, you're able to get this weird variation with the average grade used to be for the first design versus the average grade is now for the second design. So, um, the standard to be applied, so when you think about modifying a height permit, you go back and make sure that the request is going to comply with the standard for the height permit itself, right? It has to be consistent with neighborhood character and not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood itself. We'll go through that in two pieces. As we talked about back in twenty twenty, so consistent with neighborhood character, this is kind of a funny one, because technically this is an R twenty lot, right? And so if you're looking at what the zoning ordinance quote-unquote calls for, well, you know, you could do a nine-lot subdivision and put, you know, nine duplexes and get eighteen houses out there. You could do a twenty-lot cluster development, you get about four units out there, but, um, just looking at it with the blanket of R twenty citywide really isn't, um, I think, the correct analysis. We're looking at a neighborhood here, and this neighborhood is full of large estates. And one of the reasons that, um, my client was able to actually acquire the property is that pretty much everybody else trying to purchase the property wanted to do, like I said, you know, come in, cut into subdivision, come in, do a cluster, put in, you know, a couple dozen units, and my client said, hey, no, I want to, you know, keep the property as is, as a nice estate, and, um, you know, probably update it, but, but live here, you know, kind of peacefully. And so if you look around the actual neighborhood, which again, I admit is different than most R twenty neighborhoods, you have forty-one Polly Point Road, that is an almost ten thousand square foot house on an acre and a half. You have thirty-five Point Road, that is, uh, almost twelve thousand square feet house on a six-acre lot. Twenty-nine is a seven thousand square foot house on just under three acres. Twenty-seven is roughly sixty-three hundred square foot house on just under an acre. And yeah, this one in, it'll be a thirteen thousand square foot house. Uh, it'll be the, the largest of the houses, but on the second largest of the nearby lots, so it makes sense that this large estate would be in this neighborhood despite it being an R twenty neighborhood otherwise. Um, and so maybe consistency is there as far as what they're trying to do. Then you also have to make sure, okay, well, it's consistent, that's fine, but is the, the height portion, you know, going to obstruct views, overshadow properties, prepare utilities. I'm going to quickly go through these, I want to be very clear, clear P and D, I'll be clear here again, I am using the renderings that we submitted at the first application. So this is the before picture, the existing house. This is the after. Be aware that the tower being shown is actually three foot, two inches shorter than what the final project would be. Again, at this great distance, three foot, two inches is not a terribly, you know, substantial amount, nevertheless, I want to be very clear, these renderings, um, were based on the previous design, they were previously submitted in twenty twenty, was using them as a demonstration to remind everyone who didn't get a chance to do a site visit that it's very difficult to see this property from anywhere but this property. So again, we're down on Washington, and, uh, you know, that's before, and that's the after. Here we are near ten Polly Point Road, that's before, that's the after. Here we are at twelve Polly Point, that's before, that's the after. And, um, again, just reminding everybody that that tower will be three feet taller than what's being shown. Here is the twenty-five Polly Point, that's the before, that's the after, pretty hard to see. Now we're down at twenty-seven Polly Point, that's before, it's kind of through the thicket. That's the after, very hard to see. Here we're at twelve thirty-six Washington, that's the before, that's the after. Um, now we're across Washington again, before and after. Another Washington Street, before and after, another Washington Street, before and after. And, um, well, I want to make the point also, look at these, these were winter shots, and the trees have no leaves on them, and so you, it's like the best chance of seeing this house, obviously, is when the trees are not full, and even with these trees having no leaves, you can see the impact is, you know, pretty minimal. Um, it's also important to take perspective, again, how this lot is set up and how this house is set within the lot. Again, as far as fears of overshadowing or view blockage, um, this thing sits in the middle of its very large lot, is not in the way of anybody's view, and is not going to throw shadows on anybody except itself. And again, when you bring in the foliage, you can really see, and not only is it the middle of its own large lot, it is surrounded by a ton of dense foliage. So to the degree that anybody looks across this property and sees much of any of this house now, um, it's not going to be any sort of detrimental impact, there may be a tower somewhere poking out between the trees. Um, lastly, I just want to respond to issues that were raised at P and D. There was, um, concern from at least one member about setting precedent. I just want to remind the council that you're acting what's called a quasi-judicial status, and usually you're just the legislature, you enact things, and when you're doing this, you're a special permit granting authority, and those are not precedent-setting. As I am reminded constantly at the zoning board, the planning board, et cetera, uh, each application rises or falls on its own merits. Just because something was approved for somebody does not mean anybody else has a, a by-right access to the same relief. Every single application has to survive on its own. And there was also a question, um, there was some, some comment about, you know, need, and so I just want to really remind the council that there's really three types of construction. If you're by-right construction, which is the use conforms, and your lot and your structure conforms to dimensional regulations that allows you to build what you want, you just go build a, you know, file a building permit, make sure you meet all the codes, right? Then there's special permit, and that's where we are here, and that says if a use or a dimensional component meets a standard set by the GZO, so it's not by right, you have to meet a standard, it still allows you to build what you want. And then there's by variance, and that's the only time you demonstrate a hardship and allows you to build what you need. And then what I want to point out specifically is that typically dimensional relief, so if you're too close to a setback, um, if you exceed lot coverage, that's typically a variance situation, and by default, a height uh, access would also be a variance, but the city of Gloucester, previous city councils have enacted a zoning ordinance that actually takes height out of the variance standard, says, hey, we don't think people for height need to demonstrate a need, we think people who want to build something tall should be allowed to build what they want, so long as they meet the standard, and the standard in for, for this specific height permit is to make sure that spits in with the neighborhood, and is not going to adversely impact, uh, the neighborhood due to overshadowing, blocking of view, et cetera. So to be clear, there, there's no need to demonstrate need here. A special permit is a build what you want if what you're, what you want doesn't harm other people kind of standard. And so I think in conclusion, we've shown that we don't have any harm coming the way of the neighborhood, certainly no harm in the way of the city. And as a result, we've met the standards for the height permit. And so again, just for anyone who needs to make a motion, if we so lucky, it would be a motion to modify the existing special permit to allow for maximum building height of forty-seven feet, one inch above average pre-construction grade. As always, I thank you. I will, uh, stop my screen share and turn it back to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Um, so as we continue the public hearing, is there any members of the public that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, councilors, um, counts, um, Madam Clerk, is there any correspondence?
There are no communications.
Thank you. Um, councilors, do you have any questions? Oh, and welcome, uh, Council Worthley, he's back. Thank you. Um, Council Worthley, just, did you hear the presentation?
I heard parts of it, so I know I won't be able to vote on it, but I do wonder if that precludes me from asking questions, where I won't be a voting member. Could I ask questions if there's things that haven't already been addressed?
Sure, uh, of course, but, and, and I appreciate you understanding that you can't vote, um, because you didn't hear the whole presentation, so thank you and welcome back. Um, uh, councilors, any questions on this? Uh, Council O'Neil.
Thank you. Um, Joel, um, Attorney Favazza. This is in the R twenty zone. What is, what is the height? I, I don't know it off the top of my head. What is the height, um, restriction in our, in that zone?
You are allowed to build residential structures up to thirty feet above average grade.
Okay, so this would be seventeen feet, one inch above that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, that's quite a bit. So, um, that's really my only question, I just think, um, that it will set, set a precedent, and as I said at P and D, so I, I will not be supporting this.
Okay, so this is the questions portion of the public hearing. Any further questions, um, for Attorney Favazza, councilors? Um, Council Worthley.
Thank you. Um, Joel, forgive me for, Attorney Favazza, forgive me, I was at my children's, uh, school event and, uh, didn't hear your presentation. I did watch the P and D presentation, and if this were to be continued, I don't think it will be, but if it were, I'd follow up. I just want to ask one question, and I don't know if this is something that we even have the authority to do, or if it could just be an understanding. The foliage seems to be work in your favor, right? The, a- as you mentioned, the pictures that I saw are wintertime photos, and you can barely see the house. Obviously, spring, summer, and fall, that cover it more. Is there something where we can say if, um, the property owner or future property owners decide to clear-cut or cut certain of trees that they'd have to, you know, unless there's damage done, unless there were trees that were infected or something that we, we could say that the foliage is what makes this work, right? Um, but if someone were to come, and I'm thinking of future owner, they say we want to, you know, clear-cut, that changes the perspective from the street.
So, um, to respond to your question, obviously, as a purgatory authority, you're enabled, you're to condition relief, however, I would push back on the, the statement that the foliage is what makes it work. I think the foliage is one of many things that make it work, and even if the trees were to come down, you still have the fact that this, this building, this house is hundreds of feet from property lines, is on six acres of land and is in the view line of nobody. So even if the trees were all gone, it's still not going to overshadow, it's still not going to obstruct view, and it's still not going to impair the neighborhood, so I would push back against putting such a condition on this. But to the base question, you know, certainly as the city council, the permit, there was a discussion about, for about conditions. But to the base question, you know, certainly as the city council, the permit, there was a discussion about per about conditions, that would be in your purview.
Good. Thank you for answering that question.
Um any further questions, Council Member?
Uh Joel, just to be clear, um. As this, I was part of the council that approved this original application two years ago. Uh and I appreciated the chance to get out there and see the revised plans. And I understand some of the challenges that the applicant has gone through since that time. Um with their construction and architectural work. Um could you just confirm that that a large part of what we're approving for this height exemption? Is in fact uh uh. Trans- transparent glass or clear, so it's not in fact going to be a visible uh wall or obstruction?
Yeah, yes. So um. A large portion of this observation deck is wall to wall glass paneling. Obviously, there is, you know, um a opaque roof and there are some opaque lower walls, but. Uh certainly, the portion beyond. Aside from the roof, she goes himself, portion beyond what was previously permitted is going to be uh glass.
Thank you.
Any further questions, counselors? Um I have a question for Attorney for Vazza. Um I. Being on the site visit both times uh several years ago in this most more recent one. Um at the more recent one, I noted that there were no abutters there. Can you um explain to the council? If there were any concerns raised by any of the abutters? And I know that the abutters were all duly noticed to attend the site visit and no one was there.
Yep, um they, I received one. Phone call from a neighbor who has some questions, just to kind of, you know. Trying to figure out was something else getting built, sort of. They thought they're sorry, permitted, what's going on, that sort of thing. Um we talked about the relief. I think I may even sent them a copy of the application, but. There was no follow up on their part. I left it kind of saying, any questions or concerns that we know and then. Didn't hear anything back. Otherwise, um. You know, there's nothing else raised by anyone that I'm aware of, and my clients have not reported to me that anyone's come. To them directly either. Again, I think um it's kind of an odd issue out there.
Thank you. Any further questions, counselors? Um seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask Council Grow to make the committee report.
Yep, I'm got it. Um I'll read the motion and then I'll have a brief narrative if you could. Uh on a motion uh by myself, seconded by Council Memhard, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor. There one opposed, O'Neil, to recommend to the City Council. Grant to Barry M Goldman, a special permit, special council permit two thousand twenty three dash zero zero five. For the property located at Folly Point Road number one, map one forty six, lot twenty eight. In the R twenty zoning district to allow an amendment. Special Council Permit two thousand twenty dash zero zero four. Under GZO section three point one point six B, building height in excess of thirty five feet. To increase the height by four feet, nine inches from forty two feet, four inches to forty seven feet, one inch. This permit is made on the basis of plans and elevations five. Dated September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty two, entitled basement floor plan, first floor plan, second floor plan. Third and fourth plans and building elevations and submitted to the City Clerk on March twenty second. Twenty twenty three, subject to new information and or debate that the results from the public hearing. This special permit is deemed to be in harmony with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, and I so move.
Second. Um motions made by Council Gross, seconded by Council Gilman. Is there a narrative, Council Grow?
Yeah, just a little a little repetitiveness here that this is a modification of an existing permit that was granted by the previous special uh C- City Council. It's being modified under GZO one point fifteen point one three thirteen, compliance with approved plans, modification plans. Which states that at the request of the applicant, the city council may make substantive changes to the plans that is approved or the condition safeguards or limitations that is imposed. Provided that the interests of the neighborhood and the city are not impaired. And only after due notice and public hearing and only for good cause shown. As has been pointed out, um there was uh all the directed butters and butters, the butters were noticed. Uh there was no indication of any op- uh opposition or support, frankly, for that matter. Uh of the application. Uh there was no communications. We did have a um site visit on the thirteenth. It was attended by Counselor Gilman, Memhard and myself. Uh as well as Vera, um point that out. Um again, uh the butters were notified uh to uh to attend if they wanted to, and no one showed up for the for the meeting. Um there are no additional impacts relevant to section one point eight point three that would be uh uh changed by this modification. Uh the property is a bit over five acres and the structure is cited in the center of the lot as has been pointed out with no. Uh citing issue for for neighbors. Um and with that, there is really no um. Uh in my opinion, justifiable reason based on the fact that we're only modifying this another three feet. Uh that this uh flies in the face of anything that violates our zoning ordinance. Um it is big. It is tall. It will be large. Um it it does fit in that area. I I'm not sure, uh Counselor, our uh Mr. Vavaza that. Uh selling point of reducing uh housing options on a big piece of property is a selling point for me. But uh I appreciate that it is fits in the neighborhood. And again, there's been no opposition. Um so um I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Council Grow. Um. So the motion's been made. It's been seconded. Um we've had the narrative. Counselors, this is your opportunity to um to deliberate. So um. Um Council Memard.
But I would agree with the recommendation that Counselor Grow just summarized. Uh I don't think there will be any adverse impact. On any of the neighbor neighboring properties. Uh I think in fact that uh because of its architectural interest and on the large lot, I I think this will be a. Uh interesting addition aesthetically and architecturally. Uh without causing harm in any direction or or to any view of it's sort of like a its own little Hammond Castle. Um which uh will be a in a point of interest. It's architecturally attractive. And it has all the necessary setbacks on this large lot. So I will be supporting the requested modification.
Any further discussion, counselors? Council O'Neil.
Thank you. Oh, do we know when it was approved to be um? Twelve feet above the thirty feet? When when was it approved to be forty two feet, four inches? Do you know how long ago that was?
It was the last city council that approved it. It was uh the the original permit that was was uh was is being modified as uh. Twenty twenty zero zero four. So that happened. I don't have the exact date that the the um.
That's okay.
Was written, but it was twenty twenty.
Okay, so. The previous city council approved this structure. To be twelve feet, four inches above the zoning ordinance?
Um, yes, so whatever. Whatever the relief they gave, they gave it under three point one six.
Okay, so now he now that he got the forty two feet, he wants more. I I just. Forty seven feet is forty seven feet, whether it's glass or whether it isn't. And I believe this one. I mean, he already got approved for forty two feet. Now he's asking for more. Forty forty seven feet, one inch is forty seven feet, one inch, whether it's glass or whether it isn't. Um. It's still a structure that's forty seven feet high. And I believe it will set a precedent to the neighbors in the area to build their homes forty seven feet high. And on down the on down the coastline. All the way to the downtowns. I just see this being a really big snowball effect for. Really tall buildings. So I I cannot support this. I I think it's. Way too high and and. It's 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 asking. Over fifty percent more than what the zoning allows for. It's. Well, I'll stop right there.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion, Council Majota?
Um Counsel O'Neil, there's a, uh there was an article in the Gloucester Daily Times on November tenth, twenty twenty. Um that sort of might answer your question when the city council approved it. So. Not sure when the meeting was, but November twentieth, I think, twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Um Counsel Grow.
Just want to point out, I I I I too have some. Personal feelings about this project and other projects like it, but I think it's really important for the council to remember that even though these are discretionary permits. We have to be able to justify and defend them. In land court, assuming there's an appeal to these decisions. And. Oftentimes, our personal opinions about something can't necessarily be justified in a legal sense when it comes down to defending it. So we can. Defend or we can deny a permit and then we can subject ourselves to legal action that then has to go to the land court and. Uh we've seen cases the where the council has been, you know, marginally capricious in its decision making. And we usually lose those cases. I I I appreciate the counselors uh concerns about. Setting a precedent. I think Council of Council of Vazza is Attorney for Vazza is is clear that. Each permit stands on its own and and doesn't necessarily set a precedent. And I think we got to be careful about that language, but. We do have to be able to defend our decisions. And um that's something that. That we have to take into consideration on planning and development as we move forward, that we have to have legally justified reasons. For saying no. And I think we have to be very careful about minding that those 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 issues as they arise in our deliberations.
Um so I would like to um to speak on um on this. So um I was. The only member of P and D that was on both. Uh site visits. Um and um. And I'm going to be supporting this. It's absolutely consistent with the neighborhood character. The um the acreage is five point one eight. The structure is. Right in the middle of the whole piece of property. There's absolutely no overshadowing of other properties. Um nor is there a view impairment. All of the neighbors um have supported this. They had an opportunity to be here tonight. They've been duly noticed. And um in all of the neighbors have houses of the same size. Um so um I think it's important also to note that there are no adverse impacts of. Um utilities impairments, which is part of what we're voting. And um I think that. Per what uh Council Gross uh Grow said, um that we do have to look at each. Special Council Permit um as a unique entity based on the parameters that are in front of us. So um. I'm going to be supporting this. Um it's my ward. I've had no one reach out to me and um. I think um I think the applicant deserves um to have this permit granted. So I I urge my fellow. Colleagues to um to support this. Um anyone else that has not spoken? Um. Um Counsel O'Hara and then Counselor O'Neil, is your hand still up again? Counselor O'Neil? Okay, uh Counsel O'Hara, you haven't spoken. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh I was at the first site visit uh during COVID. Um and as Counsel Gilman mentioned, the houses surrounding were quite distant from the actual structure. Counsel O'Neil raises valid points about the height increase. Um but uh again, in in relation to the location and the surrounding structures. I feel that the additional or the request of the applicant is suitable for the for the area. Not suitable for the entire city of Gloucester. So my is as we. Has been mentioned that this is site specific. Um I think it will, it obviously the structure fits in with the neighborhood and I don't feel that the addition. Will uh impact any of the uh existing residents, constituents in the neighborhood. So with that said, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other than Counsel O'Neil, anyone that has not spoken? Um seeing none, Counsel O'Neil, you have the floor again.
Thank you. Um. So regarding the neighbors that have houses of the same size. I think they're going to want height of the same size. And I think it's going to go on down the line regarding the statement. That um. Each city council permit is unique and that this will not set a precedent. I don't believe that's true. And regarding um. In response to Counselor's grow, Counselor Grow's response. Stating that we have to justify our our um our vote. And our rulings. He is this person or this owner is asking for. Over a fifty percent higher increase than what is zoned for. So I really truly think that the city of Gloucester. Has. A leg to stand on if if it's ever brought to court. I mean. It's over fifty percent higher than than what's what it's going for. And it's just a bit much.
Thank you, Counselor. Um any further discussion, counselors? Okay, there's been a motion made. It's been seconded. Um roll call vote, Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
No.
Um Counsel Worthy is abstaining. Thank you, Counselor. Um Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Um the yeses have it, seven in favor, one oppose. O'Neil and one abstaining Worthy. Um. Thank you. And um. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order is business is public hearing twenty twenty three dash zero two five, special city council permit twenty twenty three dash zero zero four. In modification of special city council permit two thousand nineteen zero zero six. East Main Street number one sixteen, map fifty nine, lot fifty three, Gloucester zoning ordinance section five point. Eleven inclusionary housing requirements subsection four. Basic requirements to pay a fee in lieu of required affordable housing unit in the neighborhood business district.
Um I'd like to open the public hearing. And I'd like to continue it until May twenty third, two thousand and twenty three. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is for council vote, a decision to adopt special city council permit twenty twenty three. Dash zero zero two Addison Street number twenty nine, map twenty five, lot fifty one. Gloucester zoning ordinance sections two point three point one parentheses eight. Conversion to or new multifamily or apartment dwelling, seven or more dwelling units. Three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty five feet. And three point two point two dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses parentheses others and signs. For the practical addition of one dwelling unit. Or a legal addition of three dwelling units in the R five district.
Thank you. Is there a move to adopt?
So moved.
Um moved by Counsel Grow. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Gross seconded. Is there a discussion, counselors, on the move to adopt? Um Counsel O'Neil.
Is um this is discussion period?
Yes, on the motion to adopt, because we've already approved this in council. This is just, okay.
Right, I I have questions um for Attorney for Vazza. This Addison Street number twenty nine, that's. One of the two houses, is that correct? One was twenty nine Addison Street and one was School Street. Is that right?
If I may, Madam President.
Um right, um this is um we're we're suspending the rules of procedure here and I'm asking a question during the um. The deliberations without objection, counselors. Um go ahead, Counselor. Um Counsel for Vazza.
Sure. Um this is right, the two buildings, one's known as twenty nine Addison, one's known as forty four School Street. They're both in the same lot. So this relief applies to the two buildings on the one lot.
Okay, so I have some, I have at at least one more question. Is that okay if I continue?
Um go ahead, Counsel O'Neil.
Okay, thank you, because this is serious to me. Um. This was um accepted by the city council. With the understanding that one of the buildings would be getting a sprinkler system, correct?
Yes.
Has that been started?
Uh yeah, there's actually uh permits being applied for with the city.
Okay, because after listening to what Counsel O'Hara said about installing sprinkler system in City Hall. Um that's quite an undertaking. So that has been started, though.
Yeah, the design is underway. There will be. Yeah, the design is underway and there will be an independent water line brought in from the street to service it.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, madam president.
Sure. Um, any further discussion on the motion to adopt? Um, seeing none, a roll call vote, councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor O'Neill?
Yes.
Councillor Worthy?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memard?
Yes.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Next order of business, madam clerk.
Is the councillor Ha, O'Hara's city council statement regarding the Gloucester four hundredth celebration.
Councillor O'Hara, would you like to, um, to make this statement on the four hundredth?
Uh, two thousand twenty-three marks the four hundredth years since the English Dorchester Company landed on our shores. Gloucester sits on ancestral homeland of the Pawtucket people and their neighbors in Massachusetts, Nipmuck, Penna Cook and Wapinock tribes. Please enjoy the year long and multiple events throughout two thousand twenty-three, most of which will be free or low cost. Visit Gloucester for mass four hundred dot org for a list of upcoming events, like, share the Gloucester four hundred Facebook page to receive major event notifications by email. Send a request to info at Gloucester MA four hundred dot org. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Um, and I have an extra order of business right now, which is, um, consistent with what our agenda was tonight, um, before we do the, um, final request to the mayor. Um, also want to note that there are still fifteen people attendees on the call, so that's appreciated. There's a Celtics game tonight too, so I'm glad that you're enjoying, um, staying on and watching our council meeting. Um, thank you. Um, but I, I wanted to, um, just something that I needed to do tonight that we overlooked, um, and, um, partially because of the fire, we, um, it's been kind of a crazy week. Um, but I just wanted to mention that, um, in the approval of the minutes on, for May second, um, which was the meeting where we presented the budget, um, accepted the budget, um, for, um, referral, um, we also did the rules of procedure. And, um, so on city council two thousand and twenty-three oh two one, which was Gilman, rule number two, order of business. Um, we, um, we had a lengthy conversation and as you remember, um, councillor Gross made a amendment and, um, and when we listened to the tapes, um, when, uh, um, clerk of committees listened to the tapes, as does, um, um, our city clerk a, and in me, um, we noted that, um, there was never a motion that was made and a seconded. So what we'd like to do is we are going to repeat that motion at the next meeting. So it will be on the agenda in that way. Um, if you looked, if you read the minutes, you'll see that there was a little red and it was XXX, motion made by someone, seconded by someone. Um, we are gonna, um, we're gonna redo that just because we want to be absolutely transparent. It was, um, it was an oversight. And when we all asked if someone had made the motion every, there were four members of the council that said, yes, it was made and it was seconded, but um, good, good, due to the good hearing of, um, of Sherry, um, doing her job as she does so well, um, we, we missed the, the mo, who made the motion, who, who, who seconded. So we will be redoing that at the next uh, meeting. I just wanted to make sure that you were clear. Does anybody have a question on that? Uh, seeing none, um, final order of business, madam clerk.
Council's request to the mayor.
Okay, we'll go on roll call vote. Councillor O'Hara, you're first.
Thank you. Um, with, with the the fire at City Hall, I can't stress enough, and I've been a huge advocate over the years of fire protection that we, the city uh, step up our game to protect our citizens. Obviously, the Becker Circle, the Rust Island, Haskell Court, that they that they, uh, have adequate fire protection and that protection needs to happen as quickly as possible. Uh, fire sprinklers, I've been an advocate. You see the disruption that this has made to the city, to the city staff, but can you imagine a fire at either Plum Cove or Beaman Schools, which are the two obviously with this East Gloucester going away that are unsprinkled, that we need to put this at the top of the list of things to do as well as, uh, I don't, I don't believe the DPW. The DPW parks their equipment inside, particularly in the winter time. Um, ju- just a recipe for, for disaster that I, I hate to think, you know, you, you have a fire at DPW with trucks inside getting them out and we have, uh, storm event, we don't have trucks to plow the snow. Um, that we, we have to put fire protection. There's absolutely no reason why City Hall has been left unsprinkled for as long as it has been. Um, but we, we need to step up our game. Um, Good Harbor Beach Creek, obviously we're in the summer months, people are screaming at me. I'm sure that every city councillor is getting the same concerns. Uh, make the test results, the testing locations where these tests are being taken and the test results made public. Um, as one city councillor, I asked the administration two years ago to barricade off the creek. Children, adults, people who are uninformed are going into that creek. Um, I understand the surfers have gotten sick. Uh, not maybe gotten sick, have gotten sick. And, and this is, this is absolutely sad and disgusting that this is happening and we continue to drag our feet over this health issue. But Minav, um, the city has taken down trees a number of years ago. The stumps remain. The sidewalks have been disturbed by the growth of the, the trees that have been taken down, but no action has been made to remove those stumps or rebuild the sidewalks. So I ask that, that, that be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor O'Neill. You are muted.
Thank you. Um, I would like to just follow up on councillor O'Hara's request about the creek. Um, you mentioned where they, where they're tested, how they're tested, what the results are and for them to be publicized, but you didn't ask for when they're tested. Um, my understanding is that all the other beaches get tested once a week and I think Good Harbor Beach should also get tested once a week. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, that's my understanding is that all the other beaches get tested once a week. And that should be the same for Good Harbor. So, um, my requests to the mayor, um, request that the, the mayor request, request the DPW through the mayor, that the DPW give a timeline as to when Perkins and Green Streets will be paved. As far as I know, I, I don't know when that's gonna happen. I was told spring, so spring, summer, uh, late spring, whatever. Um, I have constituents asking for that. Uh, my second request is that the mayor requests that the Gloucester four hundred club, this is my second re, the, this is my second request to the mayor that he have the Gloucester four hundred club make a full presentation, including but not limited to the expenditures that they, that the expenditures of the one hundred thousand dollars that they receive from the city. Um, and also request that the TBW repair or replace, this is my second request on this as well. Requit, repair or replace the sidewalk on Mason Street so that the elderly residents of Central Grammar using walkers, canes and wheelchairs can get to Shaw's safely to get their groceries. I did witness a woman twist an ankle and fall. She got right up and she didn't get hurt, so that was good. Uh, going back to my first request about Perkins Street and Green Street, I believe that's my second request as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Um, councillor Worthy.
Yes, um, thank you. I want to apologize to the members of the council for me not being here earlier. I think attendance is important and, um, I value your time and the community's time, the public's time and respect the institution. But I was also at my children's, uh, evening of excellence at O'Malley School and I think we have a lot to be proud of in our schools. Obviously, I'm proud of my children, but all the kids were professionally performing, they're performing, they were just, we really have a lot of great things happening at schools and we should be celebrating those. I just want to apologize for being late for this and just celebrate the success we're having there. Um, I will re-watch this, uh, Zoom meeting as soon as it's available. I believe there was a lot of, uh, testimony at the beginning of the meeting for oral communications. I want to thank, um, I got some notes here, hang on. I want to thank councillor Nolan for inviting me to the, um, meeting that was held on Saturday morning for the Crash Road Neighborhood. Um, their issues are real and valid, and I think we need to figure out a plan. Um, I also want to thank councillor Nolan for inviting me to the birthday celebration for Adam Arker. Um, what an incredible community volunteer. Uh, she had turned a hundred years old recently, so that was awesome to be part of that. Um, and I want to echo councillor O'Hara's comments on prioritizing sprinkling of City Hall in our schools and also his advocacy for prioritizing the creek. Um, thank you everybody for your time. I'm sorry I missed the meeting earlier. That's it. Oh, and we got a budget meeting tomorrow, all-day budget hearings, so hopefully we can.
Nine o'clock, Harbor Masters Conference Room.
Really?
Um, councillor Gross?
Um, I don't really have any requests for the mayor. Um, I just want to talk about how the Open Doors Empty Bowl was a huge success. Uh, nine hundred and seventy-five participants, I believe. Um, and it was quite well done. At Cruzport, they set it up inside. It was, um, you know, pre-pandemic feel to it, except for it was a le, little different, um, uh, experience. And I think that it's, it's probably a model that they'll continue with because it was so successful and, and everybody really enjoyed their time. So that, that's about it. I think that also if we are, if we are asking the mayor to, um, to look into sprinkling, um, all these city buildings, I think we also have to be very cognizant of the budget that that will, um, require. So, um, I think that that request should also be followed with the budget to go in hand with that.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Grow.
I just want to, uh, I, I wasn't going to say anything but Tony, Tony burnt up the open door. It was, it was a great event. I just, uh, want to point out too that, uh, councillor Gross is a tireless volunteer at the open door and, uh, it's always, uh, it's always a treat to see his shiny, happy face there working, uh, working his good deeds. Um, but it was a terrific event. And if you had your picture taken by me, it's up on the Open Door website, uh, Facebook page. You know, share away. Um, and that's it. I, I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Majota.
Um, yes, just, um, to piggyback on what councillor O'Hara and councillor Grow said about the sprinklers and the budget, that would be nice to know. Also, um, a crossing signal, uh, my question may is to know how much a crossing signal will cost for the boulevard right by the, um, bridge. Um, there's a lot of cr, crossing and cars going by, so I think this have a signal for people who are walking. Uh, when, when not, when the bridge is down, that will be safe. Um, important for the people walking, crossing. Um, whether we could do both sides of the bridge or just one side more on the, um, Centennial bridge side. So, um, just my request is to follow up to see the process on that, progress on that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Memard.
Just one, uh, quick item, but I would like to recognize that we dodged a bullet in terms of the groupie show at the City Hall Auditorium and the fire. So that was in it.
Ah, oh my gosh.
Yeah.
Good point. Oh my gosh, that would have been horrible.
Would have been, the cleanup job could be even worse. But I, I would like to follow up on several other councillors' comment that, uh, um, as the Ward One councillor, um, I'm very concerned about the update that we're all overdue on the creek at Good Harbor Beach. Uh, the mayor's promised that to us, uh, for a period of time. I understand that he's set it back again. It was to be on the sixteenth of May and now it's currently scheduled for the twenty-second. I, I appreciate his written summary update and the, uh, map of all the testing sites and all the, uh, exploration that's been done. And, you know, it's certainly good to see the, uh, no swimming in the creek signs be covered, but I think we're all due a, a complete explanation about what, what the evidence is and what the program is and how we're managing this going forward so that we can avoid a repeat. Um, or at least settle a lot of the questions that have been unanswered so long about the condition of the, uh, contamination in the creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councillor Nolan.
Uh, no questions for the mayor. Um, I just want to throw out there a thank you to the generous gardeners. Um, the city's looking beautiful as usual. Your help and dedication makes our life so much better. Then also to the, uh, Department of Public Works and the Highway Department, um, the cemeteries that come along, the parks are opening up, the ball fields. Um, Gloucester's flowing with some good news. It's not just about a fire. Uh, we have a lot of beautiful things happening and a lot of dedicated people and I want to thank them all.
Thank you, councillor. Um, and I'm last on this. Um, I just have, first of all, I wanted to remind everybody that the Gloucester Education Foundation, the art festival is this Saturday, which is May thirteenth from twelve to five. Um, we permitted this at P and D. It's going to be exciting. It's going to be a whole different vibe. There's going to be food trucks and face painting and artwork and all kinds of really cool things for, for, for both, um, adults and, um, and children. And we're blessed that the Soyafree Library has opened up their building to allow for the artwork for the all the students. It was going to be in Kairos and, um, they worked together in collaboration to get that, um, working. So it's going to be really exciting. Lots of stuff happening at KPM Museum. Um, it's just going to be a great day. So if you have kids, grandkids, or if you're a big kid, um, go and enjoy the Gloucester Edu, Education Foundation Festival. I'd also like to just, a shout out to, um, Chief Conley and TJ Shimataro, Harbor Master for joining me, um, at Corliss Landing last Wednesday. It was a very, um, very animated, exciting meeting. We talked a lot about real tough stuff. Um, like, um, enforcement and, um, the rules of the landing, state landing, parking, um, councillor Worthy, um, attended. It was, um, it was really a, a very helpful meeting and I got some positive feedback after. So I'm shout out to, uh, members of city staff. And, um, and then finally on Wheeler Street, I, I need to, um, request um, a yellow divider line in the center. Um, it needs to be repainted, particularly at the area where the hill is. Um, and I just wanted to mention that. So, um, Go Celts, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Um, seconded by councillor Worthy, um, I think of, I think, no, I, um, Nolan made the mo, uh, moved it and Worthy seconded. Um, and thank you, Joanne. Roll call vote, councillors, councillor O'Hara?
Yes.
Councillor O'Neill?
Yes.
Councillor Worthy?
Yes, and thank you.
Councillor Gilman, yes. Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
Yes, and good night.
Councillor Memard?
Yes, and good night all.
Councillor Nolan?
Yes, and good night all.
Yes, have it. Good night, everybody. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Good night. Joanne, thank you for your hard work.
Good night. Thank you.